All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for March the 12th, 2019. At this time, please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. It's good to see a big crowd tonight. Nice weather out today, so I guess everybody's got out of their cocoon today to come entertain City Council, I guess. I don't know. But a nice day today. Glad to see everybody out. It's obviously budget season, so we're expecting large crowds and folks to come. But it's a big night. We've got the outside organizations here to talk through what those organizations need. The school system's here tonight to go over their budget requests. So lots of information tonight, so I hope everybody stays till the very end and hear all the discussion, because I think it'll be a good discussion tonight. And so with that, we'll see if City Council's got any other comments. Okay? City Manager?
Yes, Council and to members of the public, I would like to remind everyone that we do have positions available. Unfortunately, they're available. Mr. Kevin Corbett passed away a little over a month ago, and it would be taking over his seat for the Planning Commission and the Transportation Safety Commission. So if there's anyone that has any interest in that, we would be accepting applications. I know they have been online for about a month, and we appreciate it. The more applications, the better. So if you would just go ahead and submit that, we'd appreciate it and try to get that approved relatively shortly. Thank you.
Okay. Do have the sign-up sheet. I'll just remind everybody, there's quite a few people here when you come up. Make sure you state your name and your address. Some people signed the sheet up, but they didn't mark whether they wanted to speak to an agenda item or a non-agenda, so I'll ask you as I get to your name. So the ones I know, I'll go ahead and call first up to speak to non-agenda items. We've got Jackie Naflin signed up for non-agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, to the city planner and to his staff, and to all those that are here in the audience that have come to speak towards one issue or another. Lord knows, we have issues, but thank goodness that we have someone in place to help manage those issues and get us back on track to the best of our ability where we are right now. We're dealing with the police department's budgets, the fire department's budgets, the school department's budget. Everyone has a need. It seems to like if we will work closer together, while the city is building infrastructure and building sites and things to bring people into Bristol, Virginia side and make it more appealing, the school teachers and the schools are dilapidating and not getting paid. The police department is staffed with its staff and lack of money. But I believe with the budget this round, everybody's going to get something. I believe that we're at the point now to where everyone will get something. It is up to the management, once that money is released from you, that they do what they say they're going to do with it. For instance, with the money going to the schools. We need not a Band-Aid. It's not a Band-Aid to put handicap accessibility in a school. It's a need and a necessity, and it is law. There's a suit standing right now, possible if it's not done in an ample amount of time. There's not just for me. If it was just for me, it would never happen. But we have others. I have little friends here that will say, "We need all of the schools so that they can go to school in their own community to be fixed and to be fixed up to the state of art with the amount of money that has been allotted." Whatever is asked for, whatever that can be budgeted out that's reasonable, that you can do, I trust that that's what's going to happen. I trust that's what's going to happen with our police, our fire department, all our other departments. I trust that you're going to do the right thing. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. All right, next person, Casey Amorod, is that right?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Dr. Perigin, and School Board members. I'm Casey Amorod. I live at 2231 Collins Street. I'm a parent, and I'm a member of Virginia Organizing. I'd just like to say I'd appreciate the School Board coming tonight with the budget that they are presenting to you, the money that they have to make our schools safe, accessible, and functional, as well as ADA compliant. This has been our main goal with Virginia Organizing. It also allows for our teachers to get the raise that they deserve. I realize everyone here is with their hands out and is in need of something, but we need to show our kids, Bristol's kids, that they matter and that we need to invest in their futures. We would like to remind you that parents want to keep these three schools open and accessible and functional for these kids. Investing in them is not a short-term fix, but a long-term solution. If funding cannot be allocated, full funding cannot be allocated, we ask and encourage you to encourage our School Board to prioritize these three schools that need the repairs. Making them safe, functional, and accessible should be the priority. An allocation from the School Board will encourage them. Also, we encourage you to encourage the School Board to apply for the grants that are available, but it has to go beyond a two-year plan, not the two-year plan that they have in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next person, Nancy Marnie. It's nice weather, Nancy, and I'm in a good mood, so let's don't go over the yellow button there, okay?
What'd you say?
I said I'm in a good mood, nice weather, so let's don't go over the red button light, okay?
Remember, I have two feet, and you have your choice of which you want first. Members of Council, Mr. Mayor, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia, Euclid Avenue. I'm a property owner. It's public knowledge that the city has a bank account with $14 million in it. It's a reserve fund. Now, even though this is public knowledge, I have had some questions ever since I found this out. I've done some homework. I do have some questions, and I think it's very appropriate for me to direct mainly my remarks to the city's financial officer. But this is what my questions are. Is that $14 million free and clear? I have found out yes and no, and this is why I want the pros and the cons of that money to come from an explanation from our city's chief financial officer. My understanding is this, that my question is this first. Of that $14 million, how much of that $14 million is already designated into and as a part of the city's financial payback? And of that $14 million, how much of that money is actually available for us to tap into? Now, there are going to be pros and cons. For instance, if we overstep, and this is where I need the city's financial officer to be sure I get a confirmation or a negative, one or the other. If we overspend, my understanding is that money is for really more of a catastrophic event or something that comes up unexpectedly. Now, let's say that of that $14 million, we had to use, let's say, $8 million. Now, what is that going to do to the city's financial structure and the payback and all of the bond pays and all of that sort of thing? I understand that to mean that if we exceed whatever of that $14 million is already designated, then we've got to get back into borrowing money to run the city every month. We don't want to do that. Now, despite, please, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Now, despite that, we have made very good progress as a city. We've made progress. It isn't the best, but it's good. But we are only one step away from catastrophe. No matter how much progress we've made, we're one step away, and I don't want that to happen. Now, I would ask that the city's financial officer give some answers, please, to my questions. Looks green to me, right there.
All right, Miss Nancy's done, so will you want to address that? Because everybody needs to hear this, I think, not just Nancy.
The city has made great strides in increasing our cash balance, the city's cash balance. We do certainly, at this time, carry a balance of $14.5 million. Of that, we project that $11 million is to meet our unassigned fund balance goal, to keep the city from having to borrow short-term to pay payroll and accounts payable. An additional $1.3 million of that, Ms. Marnie, is refinance savings that will be expended over the next two years. So those funds clearly are earmarked. Current year, debt reserve funds are $1 million, and that's in the '18-'19 budget. When you add those up, that comes to about $13.3 million. So of the $14.5, I would say to you and to Council and to the City Manager, $13.3 million of that, at this time in the year, is earmarked.
All right. So we have nothing to play with but about a half a million, $600.
About one and a half million, and we're not playing with it.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you. I felt like it would be more official coming from you than coming from me. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
And I want to just add one thing, because I think that's a really important comment, is, you know, we approved our financial policies a few council meetings ago, and one of the policy thresholds that we established was the threshold of where the reserve fund, the unassigned reserve funded balance, needs to stay so that we never, ever have to borrow money to pay normal month-to-month operating expenses. And that 10 to 11 million she's talking about should always be there and never touched for that reason, because it takes us six months as a city to collect tax revenue. So you've got to basically live on your savings for six months and pay all your bills and all your payroll without borrowing money. So the biggest portion of that is for that reason. So, and that's a very important reason, because we lost our credit rating because of that very reason. We were downgraded on our bond ratings because we had let our unassigned fund balance, our reserves, go to the point where we had no cash if anything bad was to happen and we had to borrow money. We can never do that again. So that has to stay that way and earmarked, and that's why we put it in the policy, so that it's in the financial policy of the city to make sure we always keep that discipline.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right, next person is Brianna Hubbard.
Good evening. I'm Brianna Forbes Hubbard, 167 Heritage Drive. I'm here tonight to share my views on the proposals that have been before you to build a new elementary school or to renovate existing schools. I am a parent of a first grader and a rising preschooler. As a parent and a taxpayer in Bristol, I was and remain furious and baffled at the decision that this council made in November not to approve moving forward with a new school under the PPEA. Our schools are in desperate need of attention. Our students deserve beautiful, healthy, modern schools that will equip them to succeed and reach their full potential. We do a disservice to our students, our teachers, and our community to continue with the status quo. It is financially untenable. We cannot afford renovations to bring our schools up to basic safety and accessibility standards, let alone renovate them to the high standards our children deserve. I have been involved with the renovation and design process, and am confident that renovating Van Pelt and building a new school are the best path forward for Bristol's children. A community demonstrates its values by where it spends its money. What do Bristol's financial decisions say about how we value our children? I implore you to explore the option of asking the School Board and Dr. Perigin to approach our PPEA partners about resuming the new school project. Demonstrate the courageous, forward-thinking action that is needed at this moment. Let's make Bristol a good place to live and to learn for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Michael Pollard.
Thank you, members of the City Council. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. I would like to ask that the budget workshop scheduled for Saturday be held in a location equipped and capable of video recording. As you know, I've made it a priority to participate in all the meetings of the City Council, but it's been brought to my attention that I have a prior commitment for 10:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday, and both I and others would like to be able to see the recording soon afterwards. It had slipped my mind in my preparations that the school budget is this evening. I would like to speak briefly concerning that. It seems that the school proposals, the two competing proposals, one for the new school, one for renovations, have been set up in contrast to each other. The proposal for the new school, which some are avidly promoting, seems to have some significant expenses that have been omitted to make the total appear more palatable. For example, none of the needed renovations at the Van Pelt School are included in that proposal. Rather, if that proposal is chosen, all of those renovations will be done using the existing school maintenance budget, even though Van Pelt needs almost as expensive renovations, according to the School Board, as any of the other schools does. Those will be done entirely using internal, existing maintenance funds. In contrast, the maintenance, the renovation proposal includes many expenses that appear to not be entirely necessary, such as replacing windows and doors and ceiling tiles and floor tiles and what have you, not just the, for example, asbestos abatement, but replacing a lot of light fixtures. And granted, many of those would result in energy savings, but I don't know that we can afford those at this point. I would like to ask that the School Board come back with a proposal which is far more cost-neutral using their existing budget and using options that have already been presented to us, such as the option of closing Highland View, moving those students and all of their current teachers to the other schools, which we have been told they can do without increasing class sizes and without reducing any of our teaching staff. And then they can, and then we can save half a million dollars a year in maintenance expenses from that one school. Demolition costs will be $100,000. That will save $400,000 a year that can go towards renovations of the other schools. Dr. Perigin has said that elevators would cost roughly $75,000 apiece. That means $150,000 per school. That's $300,000 to put new elevators at all of the other schools. Then we have another half million a year, and I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. All right, I'm going to ask that each person I call out, I don't know if you signed up for non-agenda or an agenda item. So the first one's David Sizemore. Did you want to come up for non-agenda?
Well, most people have.
Okay, you can do it right now.
Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to speak. As a parent liaison for the school system, I have an opportunity to talk to parents, you know, and they ask my opinion, you know, "What do you think about this new school?" and stuff like that. And I share my opinion, but they also share with me that they want their children to thrive. You know, that is our model. We want our children to thrive. And by having a new school or being able to renovate the four schools, we want the best environment for our children that can possibly be, and that's what our parents want. So on behalf of our parents, we want something that our children can thrive in in creating that type of environment. The one thing that comes to mind for me is Eastern Little League. Was it three or four years ago? And Mr. Mumpower, you know, you've helped me coach on that field. It is a great field, but that field, in order to meet the needs of everybody that wanted to play and help everybody to thrive in playing a game, it had to be renovated. It had to be upgraded to meet the needs that was present. It is no different for our schools. Our schools need to be renovated. A new school needs to happen to simply meet the needs of our families, of our students, and our teachers, to help them to thrive to the best of their ability. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next person was Melissa. I guess it's Gemma, is that right? Do you want to speak now or on an agenda item?
Now.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Gemma. I'm a Bristol resident. I'm the wife of a small business owner and mother of two children. I came here tonight to talk about Bristol, Virginia, public schools. Like most parents, I'm passionate about my children's education, but more broadly, I'm passionate about all the schools in our community. I myself was not educated in Bristol, Virginia. The daughter of an Air Force engineer, I attended 11 schools before graduating high school. I remember each and every school teacher and administrator. I remember so vividly because school is central to a child's life. I can remember the smell of each building. I can remember the teachers who encouraged me. I remember every school concert and program where I performed. These years were crucial to forming who children will be. Not being from Bristol, I can see our schools with fresh eyes. I have no history, good or bad, with Bristol, Virginia, public schools. This is what I know. In the two and a half years my son has been a student at Van Pelt Elementary, he has received a wonderful education. Our schools are full of committed educators. They want the best for our children, just as we do. I have personally volunteered in my son's school to meet as many students, families, staff, and teachers as I possibly can. I can tell you, this is a wonderful community to raise your children. So what do I want for our amazing schools? I want our teachers to have a pay raise. I want to see our elementary schools safe and accessible for all students. I want Bristol, Virginia to invest in our kids. One day, we want these kids to stay here, work here, pay taxes here, and raise their children here. I cannot think of anything more important than the safety, education, and well-being of the children of our community. Every elementary school has serious concerns to safety and overall educational success. I implore the City Council to be mindful in their decision-making. Look at the requests made here tonight with fresh eyes. Do what's in the best interest of the children of Bristol, Virginia. They deserve it. I know the City Council voted down a brand-new school. This decision was met with cheers from some and disappointment from others. I myself saw the value in a new school, but I also saw the value in four elementary schools with four distinct communities in close proximity to the students and families in which they serve. So now we're here with four schools that all need help, infrastructure, accessibility, and renovation needs. The worst-case scenario for me would be inaction. You chose for us to keep our four schools open, so now let's make four schools inhabitable at the least and thriving at the best. I appreciate the hardship of having to prioritize all the needs of the city. It must be an enormous burden. I put myself in your shoes to see the bigger picture, and I always come to the same conclusion. Betting on the students of Bristol, Virginia, public schools is a sure thing. You will never regret investing in our kids. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person was Kimberly Pearson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Kimberly Pearson, and this is my twin boys. This is Eden and Emery. They're twin boys. They were born with spina bifida and hydrocephalus. They have a physical disability and attend Van Pelt Elementary because they are the only elementary school that is handicap accessible. Their home school is Washington Lee. However, we lived directly behind Stonewall Jackson for five years, and they attended Stonewall for one and a half years until we, and then they were moved to Van Pelt because of their physical need. Stonewall does have an elevator, but rarely works, and the parts are not available to buy for maintenance anymore. We love Van Pelt, and Emery and Eden have an amazing teacher there where they have thrived, so we're not, I'm not here to have them moved, but I'm here to ask to please consider making the schools handicap accessible. Not only do they need to be accessible for kids like Emery and Eden, but all the students need to be exposed to children with special needs. You know, the three schools, Washington Lee, Stonewall, and Highland View, don't have any children that have a handicap of any need. So when they all go to the middle school, it's very new to see different, and so what happens there? Does the bullying start? And how do they act? It's just, they all need to be accessible. They all need to have special ed classes so that everyone can be exposed. You know, at Van Pelt, we had a camp compassion for all the fifth graders, and they were to learn what it was like to be, or to have a disability, and that would be something amazing that all of the schools could have, because none of them are exposed to that except Van Pelt. So I would just really would like to see those three schools at least be handicap accessible, because it's just something that's very important, and it's also 2019, everything else is handicap accessible. We need to really have that happen in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
What are you going to say?
Oh, no. Yeah.
No, we gotta go.
Go ahead.
He thinks he's speaking.
We see who the boss is, right?
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, is it Randy or Rhonda and Jonathan Blackley?
Good evening. It's Rhanda Blackley.
Rhanda, I'm sorry.
And I didn't know that, I wasn't supposed to put my husband's name in there, but really, he grew up in this area. He's gone to all of the Bristol, Virginia, schools. I have not, so it's fitting that he should be on the list. I live at 1612 Windover Road in Bristol, Virginia. I am a mother to two boys. My oldest son is Andrew. He attended his first year of school at Fairmount in Bristol, Tennessee, in their brand-new facility their first year. Then we moved to the Virginia side, where Andrew attended Stonewall-Jackson Elementary from first grade through fifth grade. I remember very distinctly pulling up to Stonewall for the first time and being fearful for my son's security due to the aged look of the building. "How in the world could this school meet the standards deserving of my son's education?" I asked myself. But it only took a few months to realize that you can't judge a book by its cover, and the school turned out to be a goldmine of loving, devoted teachers and staff inside those 70-year-old walls. Andrew now attends seventh grade at Virginia Middle School and is in the top of his class. We accredit this to his four years at Stonewall and the dedicated training and the rich heritage that they gave him academically. My youngest son is Samuel. He attended pre-K at Stonewall-Jackson and has been at Washington Lee the last two years. Again, when I pulled up to Washington Lee... Again, when I pulled up to Washington Lee, I once again had the same initial feelings as I did at Stonewall Jackson. Its fifty-year-old exterior structure concerned me greatly when considering the academic environment of the school as a whole. And once again, after a few months, uh, we found that it was the most loving and nurturing environment for my son to be in. I am here tonight to speak to the concerning challenges that our schools are facing. While downtown Bristol is working to restore and renovate its age-old buildings, our schools sit with asbestos-sealed floor tiles, corroding water pipes, and in some areas, they are structurally unsound. We're talking about our children and their development and academic futures. This is about safety for our kids. And parents notice, I notice, that our school buildings are not well-cared-for. Like putting a Band-Aid on a bullet hole, we paint, we patch, nickel and dime our schools into a place of no return. School environments play a huge role in the health and academic success of the children who spend ninety percent of their time indoors. School enrollment is declining, budgets are shrinking, and faced with this real, these realities, we must renovate our existing schools, and we need to do this very soon. In 2006, the American Association of School Administrators polled fourteen thousand six hundred and ninety-two school districts and found that over half were experiencing declines in enrollment. Enrollment decline is often most acute where school buildings tend to be the oldest. Recent studies? I'll just skip down to this part here. I spoke with our principal at Washington Lee, Mrs. Maeve, and she said that we've done just about all that we can do. Our school is clean, our teachers are adequately trained and well-prepared, but more must be done. The famous sign over State Street says, "A good place to live," and it is, but for how much longer? We need a good place to learn. Education is huge, and it's the most powerful weapon that we have to change this world. I appeal to you this evening for us not to just compete in academic excellence, but to dominate. In order to do that, we need to bring our educational buildings up to an A-plus rating. Our children deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person, Danny Browning. No, I'm sorry, you're on the item. I'm sorry, I missed, um, Jared Rader. You didn't check either box. Jared, wanna come up?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. City council member, city manager. I'm Jared Rader. I live at sixteen oh one Overhill Road. There are two most important things in life. When we leave this earth, we're gonna be remembered for two things, our faith and who we've helped. I appreciate you being willing to be a public servant for the time that you invested in our city. Often, it's easy to stand back and be critical at any time, but I'm also quick to remember, and I've said this often, I don't want your job because it's not a fun place to be, especially at times when there's difficult decisions to be made. And a difficult decision that could be made and could be in the best interest of our city and our future. I want you to be remembered for a council who said yes to our future. I want to urge you to make a decision that will allow you to be remembered by others as a council who helped our students. Again, I thank you for your service and your willing to be a part of a great city in Bristol, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. All right, I think that's it on non-agenda items. Anybody got missed? Okay. All right. All right, with that, we'll move into the regular agenda. Before we get started, we got a couple of changes to the agenda items, so I need a council motion to adjust the agenda, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we table items one and two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Osborne, a second, Mr. Wingard, to table items one and two. So we can vote on that one. There's one more change as well. We'll vote on that next, which is a executive session. So let's go ahead and vote on tabling items one and two.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, now one other change?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we add in a closed session immediately following item three, and the reason on it is proprietary.
Got a motion, Mr. Osborne, a second, Mr. Wingard, to add an executive's closed session for proprietary business discussion. Please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, on to item three. Consider resolution adopting the five-year update for the Mount Rogers Hazard Mitigation Plan, staff report.
Uh, council, this is a resolution that has to be adopted by all localities. It's part of the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission. Uh, this is, has to be done every five years, if I didn't say that. The plan must be adopted at the local level in order to be eligible for federal disaster relief funds as well as pre-disaster hazard mitigation grant funds. The purpose of this plan is to meet the requirements set forth in the Disaster Mitigation Act two thousand, DMA two thousand, which requires state and local government to identify hazards, assess their risk, and community vulnerability, and to describe actions to mitigate those risks and vulnerabilities. The pre-disaster hazard mitigation update is meant to describe natural hazards and their impacts to people and property, recommend mitigations to reduce or eliminate those hazards, and outline the strategy for maintaining and updating the plan.
Okay, is that it? All right, there's one person I think signed up for item three. If I'm reading this right, Danny Browning, is that correct? You want to speak on this item? It looks like it says three, two, and one, so I'm hard, um, was it just item one? And two? So we've covered, okay, since that was tabled, you're good, okay. All right, since we have no one, um, signed up for public comment, will you please read the resolution?
Resolution, Pre-Disaster Hazard Mitigation Plan, whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the Commonwealth of Virginia's Department of Emergency Management, and the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission agree that a regional pre-disaster hazard mitigation plan shall be developed for the Mount Rogers Planning District, and whereas the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission has completed the necessary tasks required by the agreement between the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, and whereas the pre-disaster hazard mitigation plan contains risk assessments and potential losses of each of the identified hazards, a mitigation strategy to reduce or eliminate the risk of damage from future incidents, and a process to update the plan every five years, thereby making the city of Bristol, Virginia a jurisdiction of the Mount Rogers Planning District eligible for federal disaster relief and hazard mitigation grant assistance. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Bristol, Virginia adopts a pre-disaster hazard mitigation plan.
All right, what's the pleasure of council?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion to approve by Mr. Wingard, a second, Mr. Osborne. Any council discussion?
I'd just like to thank Mount Rogers Planning District, any city staff, and, and I look at that, there's a lot of localities that participated in that. It's a very detailed plan. A lot of work went into that.
If you don't realize that Mount Rogers Planning District is, I mean, it's as large as the state of Connecticut. It covers just about all southwest Virginia. Um, it's, it's a huge area, so it covers both sides of the mountain range. There's quite a bit of local municipalities involved in the planning for that. All right, any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to the added item three. We'll call it three A. Pursuant to two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A six Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made publicly initially, the financial interest of the governing body would be adversely affected per se proprietary. Need a motion, a second, to go into executive session.
Move we go into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Take a motion, Mr. Osborne, a second, Mr. Wingard. Please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Okay, by roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session. We're discussed. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right. All right, on to item four. Consider granting approval for city manager entering the contract with Bristol Baseball Incorporated, staff report.
Uh, council, this is a contract that has been entered into, um, basically on a consistent basis for an extended period of time with Bristol Baseball Incorporated, and it has to do with having minor league baseball here in the city of Bristol. This was just a renew, or it was actually an amendment to the previous contract. Previously, the city asked to renegotiate the contract, which we have done, and, um, the only additions that we would add to the lease agreement that has been currently presented to council are two items that would read, "The city shall not expend more than the three-year rolling average in any given year on the upkeep of the field or the ballpark." And number two, Bristol Baseball Incorporated and the city of Bristol recognize there may or may not be deficiencies as defined by rule fifty-eight and attachment fifty-eight of the Rules of Major League Baseball with the current field and ballpark. Bristol Baseball Incorporated agrees if there is any deficiency, BBI waives any right to enforce a deficiency that may or may not currently exist as of March the twelfth, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay. All right, no one signed up for public comment, so I need a motion, a second.
I move that we accept the contract as presented with the amendments, uh, by the city manager.
A second.
Okay, you got a motion of Mr. Osborne, a second, Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item five, Presentation of Outside Agencies, Non-Mandated Budget Request for Fiscal Year nineteen twenty. Believe in Bristol is up first?
Believe in Bristol is up first, and I believe Maggie Bishop is here.
Thank you all so much for having me here today. My name is Maggie Bishop, and I'm the executive director for Believe in Bristol. I want to touch briefly on who exactly Believe in Bristol is and why we are an important piece to the Bristol community. Believe in Bristol's mission is to foster the collaborative, vibrant nature of both Bristols by building a community of culture, lifestyle, heritage, music, and economy. Believe in Bristol strives to strengthen the heart and soul of our historic downtown and facilitate its future growth. Bristol is one community whose heart is a vibrant downtown, where our unique cultural and historical heritage is celebrated, where a sustainable, vigorous economy is enjoyed, and where the quality of life is enhanced by abundant opportunities for living, working, shopping, and playing. Believe in Bristol is the Main Street program for downtown Bristol. Our projects include historic preservation, small business development and recruitment, specialty events, beautification, and marketing. Bristol has many unique assets, but what makes downtown so important? Downtown commercial districts such as Bristol are prominent employment centers. Most economic development strategies, strategies include effort to recruit major employers such as manufacturers or large retailers, and it is in the city's best interests to leverage current assets during that recruitment process, such as downtown Bristol. When people travel or research potential places to relocate, they want to see something unique, something that has a story, especially a place that offers an experience. While looking, they find the community gathering space that is downtown. Downtown Bristol represents a significant portion of the community's tax base. If the district declines, property values drop, placing more of a tax burden on other parts of town. The downtown district is a reflection of community image, pride, prosperity, and level of investment, which are critical factors in business retention and recruitment efforts. In our twelve years as a designated Main Street community, we've seen over forty-two million dollars in private investment and over sixteen million in public investment. Over six hundred jobs have been created, and we've seen over sixty new and sustaining businesses. That number grows every year, as do our residential numbers. As a duly accredited Main Street program, we follow four rules to maintain our accreditation status. Organization includes creating a strong foundation for a sustainable revitalization effort, including cultivating partnerships, community involvement, and resources for the district. Design supports a community's transformation by enhancing the physical and visual assets that set the commercial district apart. Economic vitality focuses on capital incentives and other economic and financial tools to assist new and existing businesses, catalyze property development, and create a supportive environment for entrepreneurs and innovators that drive local economies. Promotion positions the downtown district as the center of the community and hub of economic activity while creating a positive image that showcases a community's unique characteristics. We're most known for our community events and celebrations. Here you can see just a small sampling of the events we do for the community on an annual basis. This event list grew last year with the last minute addition of the Red, White, and Bristol Block Party when another event was moved out of downtown during Race Week. In moving forward, all programming for the Fourth of July celebration will be coordinated by Believe in Bristol, including fireworks, parade, and family fun previously organized by Celebrate Bristol. At the request of several members of the community, Believe in Bristol is working to bring new events to downtown, including a Restaurant Week and Wing War this summer. We are also looking forward to celebrating the twentieth anniversary of Border Bash this upcoming summer season. However, our events and closing the streets downtown are not everything we're about. Believe in Bristol is an economic driver for the two cities. This is a snapshot of services we provide free of charge to our businesses, both existing and potential within downtown Bristol. Pending word on receiving grant funding in the coming months, we hope to be working with a group to bring a new co-working facility to downtown Bristol during the next fiscal year. While we're enjoying our lowest vacancy rate in twenty years, there is still more work to be done, including historic preservation and increased weight finding. All of this and more operational responsibilities fall on one full-time employee and one part-time employee. We have been good stewards of the city's financial contributions. We maintain a shoestring budget and pull off a tremendous amount with very little. We have brought in over three hundred thousand dollars in grant funds and another seventy-five thousand already applied for fiscal year twenty. We have made quite a few changes to our organizational side of the Main Street approach after the budget cuts of fiscal year eighteen and are still making up for them. We have done as much as we can internally for our organization while still maintaining the quality events and services we are known to produce. With increased expectations come increased costs. We're not asking for much, we're just asking for a little more stability towards the overall management of our thriving downtown Bristol. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Believe in Bristol?
Uh, no questions, just one comment. We appreciate everything you guys do. I know I've worked with folks before in the real estate business who've come to Bristol to, uh, visit, and they go, they go downtown and they fall in love with it, and they end up staying. And, um, I also know for a fact there are other towns in southwest Virginia who are trying to revitalize their downtown, and they've asked, "What do we do?" And their answer is, "Do exactly what Bristol's done." So we appreciate you guys.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I want to say your, your, um, attitude and vibrancy about you is contagious. I think you're always, uh, looking for the positive to do downtown, so I think you guys do a really good job, but with a lot of good things, and you mix it up quite a bit. So there's, everybody gets involved, so it's, you know, families and, you know, there's something for everybody through the years, and I think that's very good demographically because you gotta have a good mixture of things happening downtown to get everybody to come, so I think you do a good job at that. The one question I had, do you have a, a time of the year where you kind of get the community together to ask for, um, other ideas, maybe to refresh things as we go down the path of doing things, uh, that maybe we hadn't thought of? Do you do that at all?
Uh, we don't do like a one-time-a-year situation. Um, we have an open-door policy as far as good ideas, um, that they would like to see within downtown. Um, that, those ideas are always welcome for our office, in our office.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Well, you mentioned that you do more than events, and I'm sure most people are aware that events, one of the things I truly have come to appreciate is the work y'all do to encourage entrepreneurs and small businesses downtown. Uh, that's very vital, not just in downtown, but our community in general, so thank you for that work.
Thank you. We hope to offer more entrepreneur opportunities with different business challenges moving forward as well. Thank you.
You know, the last comment I'll say, and we're, we're getting better at presenting all the packages. Uh, these, these packages are a lot more detailed than last year and the last few years, so I appreciate that. So there's a lot more work being gone into this. You know, when we, when we budget money and spend money to any organization, you know, we're always trying to look at it from, you know, the, the money we give, what's it really specifically going to, and then what's the value that's coming back to the city? And, uh, we're not quite there yet because, you know, the, like, the large numbers, you know, kind of the overall, doesn't really give you that specific picture, you know, like, how well did Border Bash do versus, you know, all the events? Like, we spent X dollars there, and it, it did this. So we're trying to, you know... So we're trying to, you know, kind of get our arms around what's really working and doing well, because we may want to look at putting more funds to those things that we can put our fingers on that do really well. And so if you can work on trying to do that, you know, as we go forward, kind of like an ROI, or, you know, putting our advertising money here, is it really working for us? And what do we know that shows that? That would really help us out, I think.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next one, birthplace country music.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, City Manager, and staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Rob Nyker. I'm on the board of BCM and appreciate this opportunity. This is what you'll hear tonight in this presentation. Our mission, why we exist, to perpetuate, promote, celebrate Bristol's rich musical heritage, to educate and engage audiences worldwide regarding the history, impact, and legacy of the 1927 Bristol Sessions, and to create recognition, opportunities, and economic benefit for our local and regional communities. There's the three branches of the birthplace country music. First one is Rhythm and Roots Reunion, a three-day event with over 800 volunteers. Rolling Stone has called it one of the top 20 festivals in the country. Study by a nationally recognized firm showed that $16.1 million impact from non-regional visitors during the Rhythm and Roots Reunion. We're going to have a new study in 2020. Typical of many of the downtown owners, Karen Hester said, "We hire an additional eight to 10 employees, biggest sales weekend of the entire year." Second branch of birthplace country music is Radio Bristol. We have listeners in all 50 states and over 140 countries. The Farm and Fun Time program is being considered for a TV, a PBS series. Radio Bristol promotes the birthplace of country music and Bristol 24 hours a day, seven days a week, worldwide. The third branch is the museum. We have visitors from all 50 states, 40 foreign countries. We've hosted over 475 groups. I won't read everything, because you can read it as quickly as I can. Financial status of the branches. The festival is budgeted for revenues to exceed cost and therefore to be a positive financial contributor to BCM. Public radio station is not yet profitable, but we feel we can break even in fiscal year But the museum will always need significant private charitable giving and government support. How does the birthplace country music directly benefit Bristol, Virginia? Three areas I'll talk about. First is economic impact. Marcus McCall said the museum was a key factor in our decision to make a capital investment of over $20 million downtown Bristol. Hal Craddock, one of the owners of the Sessions Hotel, which is under construction, said, "The birthplace of country music with its events and its spectacular museum is the primary reason they moved downtown." Jeff Tickle, the co-owner of Quaker State Louvre, said that BCM has had the single greatest impact on Bristol's revitalization. Another economic impact that we're very excited about is our Motor Coach tour groups. We met one-on-one in 2018 with 104 different tour operators. We saw an increase of 28% from 2017 to 2018, and we attended all of those organizations' conferences. We're actually the only organization to do that. We started out with one-bus days, went to two-bus days, and last year for the first time, we had four-bus day on August 29th. All of these tour operators have scheduled return visits to Bristol in 2019. Educational impact of the museum. Hosted 41 school tours and over 1,300 students in 2018. This year will be our fifth year of our Summer Music Camp. We have lots of learning opportunities for adults, and teacher in-service training occurs at the museum. Pride, perception, impact. Wayne Bell, a retired judge, said, "I heard the museum was good before I went and was still astounded." That's what a lot of local people will say when they go in. Ben Tally wrote on the wall, "Make me proud of my town and my heritage." Pride and perception impact, not just in Bristol, but the Grammy Museum in downtown Los Angeles has a large map showing all the music epicenters of the country. Bristol is on that map in downtown Los Angeles, the birthplace of country music. An exciting thing that we've been working on since 2014 is the country music film by Ken Burns, scheduled to air in September of 2019. The Bristol Sessions is featured in Episode 1. Ken Burns and his production staff will be here in Bristol March 24th to kick off the roadshow kickoff for the country music film. Financial status of the museum. According to the Alliance of Museums, American Alliance of Museums, the average mix of support for museums, government support at all levels, around 25%, private charitable giving around 37%, earned income, which is admissions, store sales, and rentals, around 28%. How is BCM operated without Bristol, Virginia support? Surplus from building, staff reductions, hard work, just like the city's done in the last few years as we've tightened our belt. Why do we need support from Bristol, Virginia? Primarily to survive without further cutting the activities necessary to our mission, increase education opportunities, maintain increased marketing to key target markets, maintain increased Motor Coach tour solicitation. In summary, why support BCM? BCM is having a significantly positive impact on the economic development in Bristol, Virginia. BCM is educating our children and citizens regarding Bristol's rich musical heritage and its place in the history of American music. BCM is creating a source of pride for our citizens and improving the awareness and perception of Bristol locally, nationally, and internationally. We are making Bristol a better place to visit, better place to locate a business, better place to live and work. We're executing our mission, and Bristol, Virginia, and its people are benefiting. We ask you to please invest in proven success, support us, and we will provide a great return on your investment. Thank you, guys and gals, for the opportunity.
Okay. Questions?
I'd like to jump in and say, I really appreciate what you all do down there. Country music's a big part of not only my life, but this whole city's life. So, and I've talked to Larry Kirksey on this many times, and he is, he took me around the museum, and he showed it to me, and you can tell he is extremely proud of it, and you all have something to really be proud of down there, so it's reasonable. So I really appreciate everything that you all do, and even the Jam Sessions on Sundays, I've been to a couple of those, they're fantastic, so thank you for what you do, and thank you for presenting to us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming tonight, and like Neil said, the very first time I went into the museum, I was absolutely astounded at how nice it is, how awesome it is. So for anyone who hasn't gone, I think everyone in the whole Bristol area needs to make sure they visit that, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm listening to the presentation tonight, and I'm thinking, how can Bristol, Virginia get more income, economic development, which we see going on with the two hotels, the businesses downtown? I really feel like this is just part of the cog to help our community grow and thrive and prosper.
Of course, you know, I appreciate everything everyone's done over the years to get the museum up and what it is, and even Radio Bristol, and I'll just say that, walked in the other day and heard my 11-year-old son listening to Radio Bristol, so something must be working right, so.
That's true.
But talking about economic development, and I don't expect you to have the answer tonight, Rob, but as the mayor said, looking for, you know, how do you find something specific, and you highlighted it two or three times in the presentation, but I think the thing that if we were only to fund a portion would be to help y'all go to these Motor Coach conventions and bring these tour buses here. We've got one hotel right next door, we've got another one that's coming. I know it's, there's a lot of lead time to that, but that really is something that would help the museum, it would help the other businesses downtown, and it's something that we could easily track and see that return back on our investment. So if you could provide, or it may have been in the bigger packet of stuff, but that might help us if we have to consider a portion, I would think that would be a good portion we could consider.
That's an excellent area of need for the organization, and we really feel like the Motor Coach tours with the hotels, it's a huge opportunity for the town, and it's, we're focused and we're putting time in every day towards that.
Okay, a couple of things I want to say, again, I'll reiterate, and I've been in the museum a couple of times. You've got a fabulous museum. I mean, when you go in there, it's first class, the way it's put together, the, you know, all the exhibits, top-notch. The radio sound center, the place you have the concerts, the little hall, beautiful. So it's a good asset. So how can we use that asset more? We got to leverage that asset more. So my criticism's not a bad criticism, I hope, but it's, we've got to leverage that asset more than we are today, because it is an asset. So how do we do that? Because when I go down to Cumberland Avenue, like at 6 o'clock, the doors are shut and the lights are off. Well, now we got a new hotel next door, right, where people are looking to do something, so that museum needs to be open, because you got people that might want to come in there and buy stuff. You know, if you get a little activity on Cumberland Avenue, because that's our next opportunity as a city, is to try to do something on Cumberland Avenue to, you know, to promote that side and development. And you're a key part of that, I think, right, to do that. So look at your hours, I challenge you, look at the hours of operation, see if you can adjust them a little bit to get more foot traffic in there in the evening time, because a lot of people are working during the day and they can't make it down there. You know, when the Cleverlys were here, I think Believe in Bristol sponsored that, and the Chamber and so forth, and, you know, they had a session down there, right, at the museum.
Yes.
Well, a lot of people, at least I did, a lot of people didn't know about that, so they were really good. So there's something, there's something maybe amiss at how we're, maybe how we're marketing and getting the word out and stuff like that, that's really outstanding entertainment. Because once you listen to it, and once you hear the quality of it, I mean, it's unbelievably how good it is. So how can we challenge the board of directors to think about better ways to, you know, get the word out and market the museum, and, you know, make it come alive better? It's what we're looking to take money and give, so that you can do that kind of stuff. But again, just to give money out without knowing specifically what we're going to give to is kind of always a discussion, so we want to make sure we're trying to avoid that by a good plan of how we're spending our money. So with that, I think the hotel's a good, you know, first start now. You got a captive audience, you know, just down the road from you, so figure out how to use that captive audience as best you can, and, because we know, we all know the museum needs support from an economic standpoint, you know, most museums struggle to just survive as a museum, so you got to get real creative. So, you know, keep talking about that, and let's see what we can do to make it more lively on the museum street side.
Thank you, guys, very much.
All right, thank you. All right, next is Discover Bristol.
I'm going old-school tonight, so paper copies only. Thank you all for allowing me to speak this evening. I will keep my comments brief, as we've been asked to stay under five minutes, but in addition to the outside agency I submitted in January, I'm sharing the additional information about Discover Bristol's results this past year and our plans moving forward, so please let me know whatever questions you have. Since moving to Bristol last winter, I've spent a lot of time getting to know Bristol better, both its challenges and its assets. Bristol is a fantastic place to promote, and our community has a ton to offer visitors. However, the biggest challenge that I've heard this past year has been that we need more residents, particularly millennials. And Bristol, Virginia, under your leadership, is in a much better position than it was a year ago. It's been a wonderful transformation. However, much like the rest of the region, we continue to lose our residents. And that's why Discover Bristol's work is so important. Our efforts attract future residents. Rarely does someone move without visiting first. Discover Bristol works to make sure that people know Bristol is on the map and helps to enhance the experience once they arrive. We don't just need more people in our community, we need young people to stay, and we need more people to move here. And our marketing efforts have focused on promoting our city in ways that attract young people. Our growing outdoor recreation opportunities, our live music throughout the city on any given night, and major events that have national and international draw. We've also spent our year listening to the concerns expressed by our attractions, businesses, and city leaders. We focused our limited advertising budget on winter stays, which is our slowest time of year. Our goal was to raise hotel occupancy, which is how full our hotels are, and revenue per available room, how much our hotels are actually making off of those rooms at this slow time of year, both for our hotels and for our cities. And I'm excited to report that our efforts were successful. As you can see on the charts in your packet and with the email that I had shared with you all earlier, our December and January numbers are the highest occupancy and revenue per available room rates in the past four years. Occupancy for December was up 5.6% over the previous December, and January's was up 11.3% over the previous January. And this wasn't because 2018 was a record-breaking year. Overall, occupancy was only up 2.6% for 2018. Revenue per available room was up 6.5% this December and 10.2% in January, where it was overall at breakeven for all of 2018. And I should note that these numbers are based on our hotel inventory in Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee. There's not enough inventory in Bristol, Tennessee, to break out those numbers at this moment in time. While Discover Bristol's promotional efforts are not the only factor in increased hotel stays this winter, they have played a major role. We know that downtown, the winter months can be slow, so we invited the Cleverlys to the Paramount and welcomed a sold-out crowd to Bristol on a Friday night in January, where they went out to eat and drank in our restaurants and droves. Discover Bristol staff recognized that restaurants are slow in the winter and instituted Bristol Burger Week as a fun way to encourage restaurants to try something new and get residents and visitors out to eat. The response has been overwhelmingly positive, as people were motivated to go out and try places they hadn't been before. And there's been so much demand that now there are going to be burgers on menus where there were never burgers before. We work alongside the Bristol, Virginia staff on a regular basis. We've helped to coordinate the Great Streets event in October. We put on Red, White, and Bristol in August, assisted in the grant process for the Sessions Hotel on the Mendota Trail, provided valuable research and support to the casino project, and advocated on behalf of a Bristol Amtrak station. In return, tax revenue increases, which allows the cities to have larger budgets to support all the other services that are needed, public safety, infrastructure, education, and more. With a larger budget, there will be increased opportunities to attract visitors, groups, meetings, and future residents. Thank you for our partnership, for the opportunity to speak, and for considering an increase to our budget this upcoming fiscal year. Discover Bristol tells good stories about Bristol and is instrumental in the future of our community's success. Thank you.
Okay, questions?
So thank you so much, Courtney, for coming and talking to us, and you packed a whole lot of information into what you said and even more into this packet, so I really appreciate that. And I think your efforts are, you know, really crucial to what we're trying to do here in Bristol, and just looking at our lodging taxes up this year, you know, that speaks to that, so I really appreciate what you all are doing.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate everything you guys do. You know, I think, I'll say it again, you know, I know people who've come here to visit, and they fall in love with it, and they stay. And I think it's easy to sell some And I think it's easy to sell something if you have a really great product and you believe in it, and our product is Bristol. So I think you guys do a great job, and I, I think that's great how you guys focused on increasing tourism and hotel occupancy throughout the winter months when it's normally slow, because I think we all know there's three weekends a year, the two races and Rhythm Roots, where you don't have to worry about that, but how do we get people in the door and here, visiting our town, city, the rest of the year? So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you do, and, you know, as you mentioned, kind of looking forward. I think there's a lot of things out there, potential, that you'll play a very vital role in, in helping the city move forward, not just with the assets we currently have, but things that are in development or could come to pass in the reasonable future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I'll say, I think, you know, we've had several meetings through the years, some of them were kind of uncomfortable discussions, but I think the work you did to get the December and January occupancy rate up, you know, that was kind of the discussions we had, that's great work. That's exactly what we've been talking about. So when you take money that we, we give toward targeted marketing and try to, you know, change the behavior so we drive where we need the money, and you look at November through March, and hotel occupancy rates way down. But now you start focusing on that from a marketing standpoint, trying to figure out ways to get people in here to be in the hotels during those time periods, it makes an effect. So up 5%, up 10%, and now that we've got Hotel Bristol, and we've got the new hotel going down State Street, it's going to become even more critical for those businesses, you know, to be successful, that we continue to figure out out of the box how we do that even better and create wintertime, you know, outdoor concerts and stuff, you know, the museum and you guys working together. We need to figure out how to make, you know, Bristol in the November to March time, when it's cold and snowing, but a place you want to come to for, for the things we're putting on, so we put people in the hotels. So, so that's targeted financial assistance that we're, that we're looking for, that we know has direct benefit, because you can, you know, we monitor the numbers and you can see them move. So keep doing that, you know, keep working with Tamra and, and seeing where the Chamber can help us focus on those key financial things that we track every month, and when you do, and the dollars that we give you provide, tax dollars when it's a win-win, you know, that's what we're after. So, so appreciate you working on that, and, you know, thanks for the success, so keep up. Good work.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. Do we have Southwest Virginia Emergency Medical Council here tonight?
No.
Okay. So these other two Appalachian independents aren't here. Right, that was the other night. All right. All right, with that, we're on to item six, Presentation Bristol, Virginia Public School Budget Request, FY nineteen and twenty.
You go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of City Council, it is indeed my pleasure and honor to speak on behalf of the students and the parents and the families that you heard speak earlier tonight. I have some bad news and I have some good news. The bad news is my presentation is about an hour and a half. The good news is that because the, the closed session in the middle of the meeting lasted so long, folks went and bought pizza, and now the smell of pizza has got me encouraged to speed my presentation up. So I will certainly do my best to cut that down. I, I don't think I have the authority to speak on behalf of our outside agencies, but I'll do that anyway. The receptive and collaborative atmosphere that you provided for them tonight as they made their budget request is refreshing. I can only hope that my stay here will be just as receptive. So I will, I will go ahead and get started without any further ado. So, as we build a budget at the Bristol, Virginia School Board, we look at a lot of documents that deal with vision and goals. And, you know, it doesn't, it's no good to build a budget that's not attached to what the city's vision is, to what our school board's vision is, or to what the goals that both of those locales, those bodies set to be important. And so we looked at your vision document that says that your vision is being achieved through thoughtful, strategic effort, and you want to focus on these areas. I believe that the school system can be a huge partner in all of these areas. As far as being an economic hub, we are providing the workforce to make that economic hub thrive. As far as destination Bristol, Mr. Farner mentioned that, we want to get them here, but we also want to keep them here. And the only way to keep them here is to have great neighborhoods, great homes to live in, and great schools to educate children. As far as being a foundation for the future, our school system certainly is the foundation for our future. Vibrant neighborhoods, if, you know, we moved to Bristol here within the last two years, and as we were looking, you know, there's not a lot of opportunities to find vibrant home, vibrant neighborhoods in our city, and we need to improve that. But as people look to move into the city, they're looking for great neighborhoods and they're looking for great schools. The two things are typically connected. Outstanding city services, we believe, and we're biased, but we believe the most important service that this city provides is educating our youth. Healthy financial environment, we have been stable, financially stable for many years. All you have to do is go back and look at our audit reports, look at our financial status, and our, our audits and our financials are basically flawless. Superb facilities and infrastructure, we're certainly, we want to talk about that tonight as we move forward. Then if you look at the vision that City Council has set and has continued to adopt, you say that your strategic and focused increase of educational funding will seed and nourish and grow the workforce where we will be the envy of the nation. And then you also, your vision also says for 2034 that you see businesses, individuals, and families relocating to our area to take advantage of educational opportunities that are not found in nearby opportunities. We certainly have taken this into account as we have built our budget. Our vision at Bristol, Virginia Public Schools is to prepare all students to thrive in a dynamically changing world. As you know, the world that we live in now is much different than the world that we grew up in. The world that our students will live in ten, fifteen, twenty years from now will be much different than the world that we have today. We have an awesome responsibility to make sure that all of our students, whether they are economically disadvantaged, whether they are black, white, or Hispanic, whether they take AP classes or CTE classes, are all prepared to thrive, and that's an awesome responsibility, but we take that responsibility very seriously. So I will go, try to go through some of these things and talk about workforce. We're extremely proud of the partnership that we have created with our city to make sure that we are producing the workforce that our city needs. You know, next year, as part of our budget, we will be introducing Health and Medical Sciences as a class at Virginia High School. We currently do not have Health and Medical Sciences at Virginia High School, and as you know, if you've looked at any of the labor market reports, the most, the most, the highest need area in our, in our region is in the medical field. Those, those jobs also pay more than a living wage. Currently, we're not providing that workforce for our community, and we're going to change that, so we're excited about that. Cybersecurity and food agriculture. This will be a new class that we're offering, actually at the Department of Education, Virginia Department of Education is very excited about this because this will be the first class in the Commonwealth dealing with this. We've created this class simply because we'll be having a CBD oil plant come into the city of Bristol. You know, we won't just be producing CBD oil there at that plant, well, there'll be a lot of technology that goes along with it, and technology in the agriculture sector is much different than technology in other sectors. And so we'll be teaching a class to prepare a future workforce to, to go into that field and stay right here at Bristol and thrive in the future. We will also be adding a new greenhouse plant production class, where we'll be teaching our students at Virginia High School to grow plants hydroponically, because that will also go hand-in-hand with the new CBD oil plant, uh, plant that will be coming to Bristol. We'll also be offering cybersecurity systems technology in a broader sense, because if you've heard anybody speak from Richmond, we currently have over thirty thousand jobs in the Commonwealth that are just waiting to be had by folks with cybersecurity credentials. And we're also very excited that this year will be the first year that, that our partnership with Electromechanical comes to fruition. We have, we've been having a manufacturing class at Virginia High for some time. When students finish that class, they took ABC credential test. However, Electromechanical is looking for people who have XYZ credential, and I'll, I'll tell you the name of those, but I would mess it up. And so through a conversation with Mike Stallings and his staff at Electromechanical, we simply made, we made a change. We are now testing XYZ credential at the end of our manufacturing program at Virginia High School. And Electromechanical has promised that any student that graduates from Virginia High School with that credential is guaranteed a job immediately after high school. So we believe that our goal as a school system is to provide a talented workforce for the city of Bristol for today, but, and also for the future, because without jobs, we know that our community will continue to stall. I also want to talk about, you know, funding. One of the visions that is in your, in your document is that a, a strategic and focused increase in education funding will cause us to have the best school system that's possible. However, the twenty-year average for appropriations from the locality is 6.8 million. Our current appropriation is 6.6 million. Very few localities will you find that over the last twenty years that the local appropriation is below the twenty-year average. And let me show you what that looks like. As you can see, if you go back twenty years ago, we were, you know, getting about eight million dollars annually from the locality. There were some sharp, sharp drops along the lines, and they went along, those drops oftentimes went along with depressions. The, the Great Recession was one of those times. However, if you look at that, those, over time, the twenty-year average for local appropriation from the locality is 6.8 million, and as you also know, our current appropriation is 6.6 million. During that same time, there's been another trend in the city of Bristol that may be striking to you. I think we all know it, but I think when you see it in this format, I think it will really raise your eyebrows. That trend is the amount of poverty that we, has grown in our, in our school system since 2002. In 2002, forty percent of our students were eligible for free or reduced-priced lunch. In 2017, seventy-six percent of our students are eligible for free or produce, free or reduced-priced lunch. I think all of you at that table, myself included, many people in this room grew up in Bristol and know, noticed that there's a difference in Bristol now and twenty years ago. But to see these numbers put onto a graph, to me, it's very striking. And when you, when you compare that to the amount it costs to educate an at-risk student, we know that it costs more, that's the whole point of the at-risk add-on that the state provides. Our, the number of at-risk students that we've had has drastically increased, but our appropriation over time has basically stayed steady. And so our job, our teachers' jobs, has become harder and harder, even though we have not had an increase in appropriation to go along with the increase in at-risk students. That's what that looks like as you compare it to our region, to Appalachian Virginia, and to the state of Virginia overall. As you can see, there has been an increase in at-risk students overall in each of those four areas, but Bristol started out higher twenty years ago and has climbed higher than any of those other regions, and that is our region, which is from Pulaski to Lee, the Appalachian region, which covers a greater area, and then entire Commonwealth of Virginia. So as you can see, our teachers, our administrators, our staff in our schools have a very daunting job. That's a new, really, poverty seems like it's, it's old news for Bristol, but it's really, it's, it's really new news, because if you look at this graph, this shows poverty, perennial poverty divisions in localities over the last forty years. Bristol does not make that cut. So poverty for Bristol is a relatively new item for us to be dealing with, but as you can see from a local appropriation standpoint for education, we've not made a change to this new trend. Now, I know twenty years is not a new, not necessarily considered a new trend, but when you look at it over forty years, it certainly is a new trend. So how do, how does our city compare in education funding to other localities? This is something that we've been talking about for several years. If you look at the percent of the budget, Bristol is there on the far left. Twelve percent of the local budget is, is used for K-12 education. If you go to Martinsville, that jumps to 22%. If you go to Radford, 18%. Radford's number is typically higher. However, the year before, they had a $2 million roof investment that they had to make, and so that, that appropriation went down. Stanton was 28% of their local budget goes to K-12 education, and in Waynesboro, it's 27%. And whenever you compare that to the, the per-student amount that we spend on our students, we, we only beat Radford in that category, and again, that's because of the decline in their, in their appropriation due to the roof issues that they were having. You look at it by a per-resident standpoint, you get the same thing. Bristol is spending less per resident than those other localities when it comes to K-12 education. But what is striking, I think, about that is when you look at the local composite index, we're about middle, middle of the pack. If, I, I don't mean to tell you something that you already know, but the local composite index is how Virginia develops their funding formula. And that, it looks at three categories. One, real property values in the locality, that's 50% of the formula. The 40% of the formula looks at average gross incomes of the people that live in the locality, and then 10% is your local sales tax. And so based upon those numbers, the state has a formula that says, well, you have this much property that you can tax, you, your average income is this, and you generate this much sales tax, so we believe that you can provide, and for Bristol, it's 29% of what it costs to fund education. The state should, and not always do, but should, fund the other 71%. So our capacity is better than the capacity of Martinsville and Radford, but less than the capacity of Stanton and Waynesboro. But when you look at our, so we have about mid-range capacity, but we have the tie, the highest tax rate. And so we have more capacity to tax, and we tax it higher, but for some reason, we've fallen into the trap that we only fund education at 12% of our total budget. I think there's plenty of reasons that we could attribute that to, and we could talk about those all night. What I'm asking you to do is to look, as, as you can, look at this next graphic, that shows the number of at-risk students in each of those localities as well. Only Martinsville has more students living in poverty than Bristol, but we're funding education less than any of those other localities. And so my challenge tonight, I'm not saying this to, to point fingers or call names or to give blame, what I'm asking this council to do is for you to be the council to change this graph, because only you have the capacity and the authority to do that. And we'll talk about some ways that we can do that moving forward. So here's a, a very quick budget summary. So the, we, we are basing our numbers off the approved conference budget that came out of the General Assembly in February, February 20, the fourth. We're, we're assuming that one-half of our supplemental lottery will be used for recurring expenses. The other half of the lottery, we will not use for recurring expenses because we're not guaranteed that they'll keep our lottery funding at the same level next year. So it's financially prudent to keep half of that back for non-recurring expenses. We also, is, is, we've got some good news again, there's going to be an increase in state revenues. That is because they are increasing the at-risk add-on. If you're not familiar with that, that is additional funding that they give you for every student that you have who receives free or reduced-priced lunch, and that's a very, that's very restricted. You can use it for things like additional guidance counselors, math tutors, or Delegate O'Quinn had this added to the things you could use it for last year, teacher recruitment and retention. And that's exactly what we intend to use that increase on. As a matter of fact, the conference budget also increased the at-risk add-on this year. So as you know, we already had a significant increase from the state, but before this year is over, we will, that increase will go up for two reasons. Number one, because they increased the at-risk add-on for this budget year, and also because our enrollment has not declined to the level that the governor projected. Our enrollment has actually climbed just a little bit, and so we are higher than what, our enrollment is higher than what the governor projected it to be. So we will have additional state funds this year as well as next year. There's also an increase in lottery. As we said earlier, part of that is restricted, part of that will not be restricted, we'll use part for recurring, part for non-recurring. And then the teacher compensation, which you've probably heard about in the media, allegedly, it's a 5% raise for teachers over the by ending, but as we know, that's a 5% raise for SOQ-funded positions, which makes up about half of our total positions overall. So anyway, so it's great to have increases in revenue, but we also have increases in expenditures. Of course, the salary increase being part of that, we're taking the full amount that's given to us from the conference budget, applying that towards raises, and then we're also taking the increase in the at-risk add-on and applying that to raises, because that's what it takes for us to be able to provide raises for all of our employees. The 5% provided just for teacher compensation is not enough. I could go into that more. I could go into that in more detail, but I would just bore you to death with all the percentages that go along with that. But I'm happy to, because I enjoy talking about stuff like that. Uh, we also are going to be adding a math teacher at Virginia Middle School. Uh, currently, you're, you're probably aware, we have accreditation issues at Virginia Middle School in the area of math. Um, we need another teacher in there to, to help make those class sizes smaller and provide additional tutoring remediation. And it, we also have some scheduling issues because we're short a math teacher there too, so that will help with both of those. But that, none of those things that we're talking about there, except for a modest, uh, request for an increase locally, will have to come from any local funds. That's all coming from additional state funds. However, uh, I guess the elephant in the room is that we also is going to be a significant request for an increase because we are also asking city council to give us the funding that it will take to make our schools safe, accessible, and functional. As you'll remember, I'm sure, uh, we, we provided a budget-neutral solution back in November that would have made all of our schools safe, functional, and accessible. Uh, that was approved by our school board, five to zero. It narrowly was defeated by this council, three to two. And so as a result of that, our, our school board certainly does not want to take anything from the $14 million that Ms. Mornin asked about earlier. Or we certainly do not want to see an increase go to the taxpayers, to the city of Bristol. We had offered a budget-neutral solution to our safe, accessible, and functional issues. However, as superintendent of schools and as a school board, we have the responsibility to make sure that our students attend safe, accessible, and functional schools. And that's how we have arrived at this request, which we'll go into more detail. So let me start out with some other funds. These are our carry-overable accounts. As you know, a, a local school board cannot carry over local funding without the approval of the appropriating body, except in a few circumstances. Food service is one of those. Our food service, um, um, unit is self-sustaining. And we will actually be carrying over some money. The recommendation from the federal government for that is that you have three months' worth of operating expenses. And that's what that, that's what we anticipate the beginning balance to be, $425,000. Uh, that will cover three months of operating expenses should we need it. The textbook fund, in your mind, you're probably thinking about a big, thick book with a hard cover with lots of pages and chapters with questions at the end of each one of them. And traditionally, um, over, you know, the last 20 years, that textbook fund has been exactly for that, to buy textbooks. However, uh, Virginia has given school divisions flexibility. And now you can use the textbook fund for any instructional supply. And the majority of that in the city of Bristol is used for technology, mostly our one-to-one initiative, which we have, uh, drilled down to grade two. Um, yeah, grade two. Um, they don't take them home in the elementary school, but all of our students in middle and high school actually takes their laptops home. Then we have, oh my goodness, wrong way. Um, then we have our school capital projects fund. Uh, you've probably heard me preach about this. Did you turn the heat on, Mr. Reeves? Gracious, here we go again. Sweat's rolling down my back. I'm gonna have to go to the dry cleaners. Um, so school capital projects fund, back in 2009, the state used to give money for school construction and school capital needs. When the recession hit, they quit doing that. We are, we're fighting hard, I promise you folks, we're fighting hard to get that reinstated uh, through our own advocacy here in Bristol, but also through our membership with the Small and Little Schools Coalition. That's a focus for us. Um, and for example, in 2000, in 2009, the last year that we had it, Bristol received over $400,000 in state funds for that account. Now, I'm not good in math, but you can take 2019 and subtract 2009, that's basically 10 years that we went without that. At $400,000 a pop, I think that's about $4 million that we could have been spending on our school facilities that we're not able to because the state cut that as part of the recession. We're working hard. We would appreciate your advocacy in that too, not only as a city council, but with your work with the Virginia Coalition of Counties and Cities, uh, to also advocate for reinstatement of those funds as well. Because I think if that money was there, we wouldn't be having the hard conversations and making the hard decisions that we're making now. We would be able to handle a new school or renovations of our school had, had we had that state funding. And then we also have a local, I'll never get those back in order. We'll also have a local capital projects fund that in 2012, um, city council made an agreement with the school board that any amount up to $200,000 annually that they did not spend could automatically be put, placed in this, uh, local capital fund for capital needs that we may have. And so that number is probably a little bit high. Um, we had budgeted $150,000 in this year's budget to pay for a project manager for the new school. Of course, we don't need a project manager for the new school, so that money is still in that account. And then we're also assuming, we're not predicting, but we're assuming that we will have the full $200,000 at the end of this budget cycle to put in there too. So if you take that $350,000 away from that 792, that, that amount doesn't look as great. And, um, I will tell you this, and it's not my business, or it's not my place to hurry or rush you, but whatever decision that you're going to make about how we deal with our schools that are not, not as safe as they should be, that are handicap inaccessible and that are not functional, we need to know that direction. Because that's how we're going to spend that local capital amount, depending on what decision you make. If you decide that we're going to build a new school, we'll spend that money one way. If you decide that you're going to renovate, a full renovation, we'll spend that money another way. If you tell us, you know, tough luck, better luck, next time you're not going to do anything, we'll spend that money another way. But we do need to know from city council in, in pretty rapid manner, how, what direction you're going to take as far as safe, functional, and accessible schools. Because we have to put out RFPs and we have to decide how we're going to spend that money. We can't just, all of a sudden, June 30th, say, okay, we're ready to build, we're ready to renovate, we're ready to do whatever it is, and think that we can get anything done in summer before the kids get back to school. So again, it's not my place to rush, uh, but it would be great to have direction from you in the direction that we need to go. Of course, as you know, your budget, like our budget, is mostly in salaries and benefits. This is a quick summary of how our teachers are paid at five-year increments. The state average is in that first column. Bristol, Virginia salaries are in the second column. And then Bristol, Tennessee, just a stone's throw, throw from here is in the last column. And so if you look at starting teacher pay in Bristol, Virginia, we're looking at about $36,300. Uh, a teacher could make almost $6,000 additional by applying to a school on the other side of the street. That's, that's pretty telling. It makes it hard for us to recruit. As a matter of fact, last year, we hired a lot of great teachers. We missed out on a lot of great teachers too. Most of the folks that we hired, we got our first pick. In three circumstances, last year, we hired our third pick. We, number one turned us down, number two turned us down, and number three, which were great picks, where we wouldn't have hired them either. But we missed out on one, two, and in one situation, we, we actually hired our fourth pick. Now, we had, we have great teachers. The, you know, our, our fourth is better than some people's first, and we're pleased about that. But what's striking about this is go to year 10 and look at the salary a Bristol, Virginia teacher makes at year 10. Then look at the first-year teacher at Bristol, Tennessee, still $2,000 more after working for 10 years in the city of Bristol, Virginia. We have, now, we're competitive at the top of our scale. And I have made a proposal that is not all, not as popular as, as some proposals, uh, to adjust the bottom of the scale because of this, you know, one-time influx of state money to help us do that. Um, and I think that we have a plan to balance it. What our board approves later on, we don't know. But the salary scale will be approved after we know what our total budget is. What we know, we don't know what our salary scale will look like, but what we know is it'll have to fit in the confines, the confines of our total approved budget. And so if you look at that just from a state average, um, and, and look at a regional ranking, our region goes from Pulaski to Lee, 17 school divisions. At the bottom of the scale in our region, we rank ninth. At, at, when you rank us in the state, out of 132 school divisions, our starting teacher pay is 118th out of 132. If you go to year 25, which is the top of our scale here in Bristol, we're ranked first in our region. So we're doing a pretty good job there. And as a matter of fact, when you compare that to other salaries across the Commonwealth, we actually, uh, compete very well there as well. We're ranked 27th out of 132. So my proposal, although may, it may not be, um, very popular, uh, it does address this issue and it balances, it puts more money into the bottom of the scale and not as much money into the top of the scale. As a matter of fact, the way the proposal currently is, there's no raise at step 25 and above for our teachers, but there is a bonus that we would be paying out of the additional state funding that we have, uh, as a result of this increase in at-risk add-on and our increase in enrollment. So that's, as you know, Sal, I wanted to share that with you because that's part of our request, but salaries and benefits also make up the bulk of anybody's budget, whether a small business or, or a school system or a city. Um, just a quick recap, our revenues, most of our revenues come from the state. It should be about 71%. Uh, the other 29% should come from our locality. A smaller portion comes from the federal government, but that should just be, uh, as our, our good federal program director says, often and always, she reminds us, the federal dollars are the sprinkles on the ice cream. Uh, the state and the local provide the ice cream, the feds provide the sprinkles. You can live without the sprinkles, but as we all know, you can't live without the ice cream. Especially at eight, whatever time on a Tuesday night, having not had dinner. But, and then we also have a small amount of money that, uh, that we use from, from grants. So that gets us, we're going to talk federal. If you've, if you've watched, uh, any of the new shows recently, you've probably heard that President Trump is recommending a 10% decrease in, uh, federal funding to school divisions, to public schools. He's also recommending the possible elimination of Title II, which for us means $156,000, and also of Title IV, which is $369,000. I will tell you, we hear that every year and we plan for that every year. And in my experience as a superintendent, which has been short about, I guess, going on five, five or six years now. But anyway, we always hear that, it doesn't happen. So we plan for it, we have a backup plan, but we budget for, for level funding. And so that's what this budget does. Again, I will remind you, our schools should be able to operate, function, no issues whatsoever. If they pull every federal fund that we have, we ought to be able to continue to operate efficiently. We just won't have the sprinkles, we won't have the extras. Some of the things that we pay for, for that are teachers aides, um, um, math specialist. Uh, we have one area where we were able to reduce class sizes with that. So those are things that are definitely very beneficial, but they're not necessary. So that gets us to our total operating budget. Uh, uh, you can see the comparisons. I won't read those numbers to you, but I will hit the, the significant highlights. There's a, uh, in our operational budget, there's a $1.2 million difference. Uh, that comes from an increase in state funding of $850,000. Um, uh, no, preparing for no increase in federal dollars. And then we're asking for a $386,000 increase in our, in our local appropriation. Uh, then we also, we had some surplus items that we sold last year that we don't anticipate receiving that revenue. So actually, the, uh, total local revenue would be 381. But remember, that local revenue is not necessarily coming from you. Uh, that's coming from the sale of surplus or, or other programs that we have. So our, our total city appropriation, we're asking an increase of $386,000. And so we'll go into that, you know, we got, as, as part of that increase is $206,000 in general state funds, uh, the compensation supplement, which is that 5% increase that you keep hearing about from, um, from the state government. Keep in mind, for us to give a 5% pay increase, it's about $900,000. So even though it sounds really good whenever it's presented, and we, let me say this, we appreciate it. We appreciate every penny we get. But it is not always telling the full story because people think that we have the funding to provide a 5% raise for everybody. And that's just simply not the case. The salary increase, um, uh, reallocating the way that we, um, provide our funding for health insurance, um, it's going to cost just under $1 million. Um, some miscellaneous expenses there. The math teacher at, at Virginia Middle School is $68,000. And then the increase that we have, um, is two maintenance positions. You know, we, again, we, we provided a budget-neutral solution for our safe, accessible, and functional schools, to make our schools safe, accessible, and functional. And we're using our current maintenance staff to do the upgrades at the other school. However, if we're going to keep those 80-year-old, 70-year-old, and 50-year-old buildings open, we need additional staff to maintain and keep those, those programs running. So that's 86,000. And then we're also asking for the $300,000 local appropriation that was cut last year to be reinstated so that we can use that to make sure that everybody at every level of our, um, our salary scale receives a raise. That includes teachers, clerical folks, bus drivers, everybody, all employees that we have, everybody except for me, mind you. No raise for me either, again, this year. So I'm not complaining, I'm just making sure that nobody thinks that. So if you look at the summary, if we had the new school focus, uh, we would only be requesting an additional $300,000. However, that was not approved by a 3-2 vote in November. And so we are going to be asking for two additional maintenance folks, the 300,000, we would, return of the $300,000, and then the amount of money that it takes to make our schools safe, accessible, and functional. And so I will remind you what that budget neutral looked like. We were going to save $865,000 in personnel costs by combining from four schools to two. The operational savings would be a little over $120,000 for a savings of almost $990,000. Uh, we made up the rest of that $250,000. We had two proposals that were out there, we never agreed on, on which direction we were going to go. One of those would be for a return of $250,000 of the $300,000 local appropriation that was cut. And the other option, which I think you guys like the best, was to take $250,000 from our lottery funds, which we could, and apply that towards the annual lease payment. And that's how we got to budget neutral. I know there's some concerns about, you know, if you, if you build the new school and you consolidate, that folks would lose their job. And I think that's a misconception. I'll remind you that we would, we, we would be, our staff would be reduced by one administrator, five grade-level teachers, so a first, second, third, fourth, and fifth-grade teacher, one P.E. teacher, one media specialist, which you probably know as a librarian, a school counselor, a clerical position, one, we have full-time nurse in five of our schools, we have a, about a two-thirds nurse at our others. So that's where that .68 comes from, and three custodians. Now, there's a, there's a star there beside the counselor. Mr., could you please turn that heat down, Mr. Reeves, sitting there? But the, the state, through the safety grant, that's, y'all, y'all are giggling, y'all told him to do it. If I take my jacket off, it's going to be embarrassing. That's what it is, I hear you. So, uh, but anyway, school counselors, um, the, and as part of the safety initiative, which, uh, our chairman, or our vice, our former vice chairman, Tyrone Foster, who is the state president of the SBA, was appointed to that committee. One of the recommendations that they brought out was to increase counselors and pay for it with state funding. Over the next three years, we will receive additional state funding to reinstate that counseling position. So I will tell you in complete honesty, that if we were to follow a budget-neutral plan to build a new school, very, it would be very unlikely that we would have to implement our RIF policy. Uh, administration, I did not think that we would have to do that. Grade-level teachers, absolutely, we would not have to do that. When you get into those one-position, uh, teachers, like a one-P teacher, one media specialist, one clerical, one counselor, you might have to do that. But I will tell you, our average, um, teacher turnover every summer is about 20. And as you can see, we're not getting anywhere close to, to 20. Now, we may have some very specific positions where we have to reassign them to another responsibility or, or maybe implement our RIF policy, but that is highly doubtful. And in the worst-case scenario, you can add all those numbers up and see that it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that big of an impact, even if all of these had to be riffed, which would never happen. So what's different now than back in November? So originally, the, on the property rubric, when we looked at 13 different properties across the division, affordability was very high on that list. It was, you know, everything was ranked and rated with a four-star, a three-star, or what have you. And affordability was ranked very highly because at that time, the city didn't have $14 million in the bank, 14. How many? Four, four, yeah, 14.5 million dollars. However, now, there is some money in the bank. And if the city so chose and wanted to go in this direction, I know part of the problem with, um, you know, a lot of folks, it was hard for some folks to support the new school being built at Van Pelt because it was not centrally located. And, but it was, that was the number-one site because it was very affordable. If you remember the price tag for that property, it was free, which made it very affordable. And from a sensituality standpoint, not so much. However, because the city has done such a good job, uh, I called Mr. Reeves the $6 million man at the end of last year because they had that additional money to put in the bank. And that was certainly good work and, and good strategy from your standpoint. But we do have the capacity now, if city council so chose, that we could buy a piece of property that would be more central, that could get more buy-in, that could be, uh, budget-neutral or close to it, um, budget-neutral. Because as we know, those interest rates have increased now. Um, and still not put another burden on our taxpayers, not steal from the 14.5 million dollars that's in that reserve, not take away money that I know that you need to put into the landfill, not take away from money that I know that you need to put into the Falls project. We truly are not trying to be a bad partner. We're trying to be a good partner. We truly are not trying to be a bad partner, we're trying to be a good partner. We're trying to take one of your biggest problems in the city and take it off your plate without having any budget impact whatsoever. Just continue to give us the same appropriation that you give us now, and mark the schools off your list. I mean, we've got that under control. But, that's not our decision, our board voted five-oh to approve it, this council voted three-two against it. We will continue to ask for that, that's what our school board's goals has been set, and we will continue. As long as you say no, we'll continue to ask. So I'm gonna continue to ask, and I'm gonna continue to put forth a good argument for it, because we believe the kids who are here tonight, the parents who are here tonight, the families who are here earlier tonight, deserve the very best Bristol has to offer. And for too long, we've not been able to provide that. Something else that is different is a new law has been passed, SB thirteen thirty-one. What that basically does is it takes, it takes the very unique PPA policy that we brought before you last year, and adds a new touch to it. It adds solar energy to it. And so we can, through, but because you would be using solar energy, which is very green-friendly, and you would be using it in a high-poverty area, the investors now would be eligible for some very low-interest loans. As a matter of fact, in Hope County, North Carolina, uh, they did, they followed this same program, and they, their loan was actually zero percent interest. So they borrowed about the same amount that we've asked to borrow, the eighteen million. There was no interest on it over the next twenty or thirty years. They, they did not have a power bill, because they were producing solar energy at the school, and all the excess solar energy that they produced, they sold back to the grid. So not only did they not pay interest, and they did not pay an electric bill, but they were making money at the same time, because they were selling energy back to the grid. That annual payment, which was very similar to ours, was supposed to be one point two million. It went down to, and you, don't believe me, look it up, it, the facts are out there. Their payment went down to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the first seven years of the lease. Same, almost the same identical PPA process that we recommended to you. So, um, as you can see, there are some different options that are out there now that I think should make city council reconsider, uh, building a two schoo- going back to the two-school model. We have options to put it in a central location where we can serve families, uh, that, you know, they don't have to go to Exit Seven, which I think was one of the concerns. We could act, there's actually properties that are very central to some of our hap- public housing that we could actually use. And I would willing, I think our board would be willing to move forward and talk with city council about doing that. Because we, even though we believe that if you don't build a new school, or if you don't agree for us to build a new school, we have to provide safe, accessible, and functional schools. But that's gonna come at a cost to either our reserve, or it's gonna come at a cost to taxpayers. And then, you know, a few more years down the road, we're gonna have to be looking at this process again, because, again, we would be putting those millions of dollars. And when I say Band-Aid, I'm not saying that accessibility and safety are not important. I'm saying we're putting a Band-Aid on a wound that will heal up for a temporary period of time, but there's still gonna be a scar at the end of it. I mean, that scar is always gonna be there. Every building in the city of Bristol, Virginia, every school in the city of Bristol, Virginia, will close at some point. Highland View is closer than most. Something has to be done, it's gonna probably happen sooner rather than later. Our board, even though we ha- are asking for fourteen million dollars, we certainly don't believe that's the best, best path forward. We believe a budget-neutral path forward is the way to go. However, we will not, we cannot, we will not and cannot stand idly by and continue to send our kids to schools that are not as safe as they should be, schools that are handicapped and inaccessible, and schools that in the year two thousand nineteen are not even functional. So, breaking that, that, getting back to the renovation costs and breaking it down by school. We have broke each school down by all the ca- categories, safety, accessibility, and functionality. And for all four elementary schools, uh, just to take care of the safety issues, it would cost two point one million dollars. We absolutely think those are number-one priority. And handicap accessibility, three point two million dollars. Whether or not you think that, we think that's a hi- uh, number-one priority, too. Whether you agree with that or not, uh, once you do the renovations to the safety, you're required to follow through with the accessibility. That's how that we have not made all of our schools handicap accessible since nineteen ninety-two, when that, that law came into effect, and schools all over this region and state and country started making those changes, is because we've made no significant, um, uh, improvements at Washington Lee, Highland View, or Stonewall Jackson. Uh, then from a functionality standpoint, you're looking at six point two million dollars for a grand total of eleven point six. We would be, I, I know this sounds paltry, but we would be taking care of that out of our appropriation, seventy-two thousand. Keep in mind, we still have a transportation building, a central office, a middle school, and a high school, where our, the rest of our local appropriation would be going towards capital needs. You take the twenty-five percent cost for architectural fees, permits, and contingencies, add that to that, that's not my number, that's what the experts say you should add. Um, architectural fees are obvious, permits are obvious. Contingencies could include things like you tear down a wall, and oh my goodness, you find something in there that you didn't expect. This is also, does not include taking all the doorknobs that are currently not accessible to folks with handicaps and replacing them. So there's a lot of contingencies that we just aren't priced. And so even though twenty-five percent is gonna feel high, I think it's also a very reasonable number. And thi- these numbers, for the most part, will provide by, provided by Thompson and Litten, a local architect who does a lot of schoolwork, uh, very familiar with it. It's, some of these numbers are ours, because we've already received quotes on some of the projects that are in there, but the bulk of the numbers that you see here come from Thompson and Litten. Here are the other numbers for the Virginia High School, Virginia Middle, Transportation, our custodian maintenance, and our central office. Um, you're looking at total safety, total accessibility, and total functionality at a cost of two point five million dollars. That would be covered by Bristol, Virginia Public Schools out of our normal local appropriation. You know, currently, that's six point six million dollars, and that would be broken up over the next couple of years. No city request for those items. You know, going back to ADA nineteen ninety-one is whenever the big hit, uh, came from, to localities, and you probably started seeing a lot of construction and renovations going on. Two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, twi- twice, and two thousand and sixteen, you see amendments to that act. We have been able to avoid, um, making our schools handicap accessible, because we've not did any major renovations. There's two things that keep you from providing the, um, providing a public building to be handicap accessible. Number one is that you have, for a school, that you have an alternative. We have an alternative, Van Pelt. And so if a child, as we heard earlier tonight, lives one property away from Stonewall Jackson, and they have hand- they have accessibility needs, instead of going to their community school, we bust them up to, um, to Exit Seven at Van Pelt. So as long as you have that, you're not required, I, I don't know that that, if, that should be the way that we're looking at it. Are you required, or is it what you ought to do? At the end of the day, we should do what we ought to do, and make our schools handicap accessible. And the other option is, if you don't do a renovation, you're not required to do it either. We've not done a renovation, uh, a, at any of those schools since nineteen ninety-one, or major renovation. We've added a window here, or a roof there, but no brick-or-mortar type renovations. Um, Blaine County, dealing with some of the same issues, I share this with you just to show you that the numbers that we were looking at last year are, are not as far off as you might think they are. And to also say, you heard earlier tonight, uh, you know, litigation is already in process. I don't know how willing y'all are to go through the process of litigation, but I would certainly ha- hate to see one penny of Bristol, Virginia taxpayer dollars spent towards litigation when we have a budget-neutral option of how we can address it. So, that gets us back to our capital needs request, eleven point five million dollars from the city, two point eight million dollars in soft costs, for a total of fourteen point four million dollars. Um, you know, we're, again, we're, remember, we're asking for eighty-six thousand dollars for two additional maintenance staffs, uh, the return of the three hundred thousand dollars that was cut last year from our local appropriation. Uh, we're requesting fourteen point four million dollars in capital expenditures. That's to make our building safe, accessible, and functional. I would remind you that currently, uh, you, there is zero debt service for Bristol, Virginia Public Schools. Any debt that we have as a school division is paid for out of our local appropriation. And part of that does not count towards your debt capacity, because it's in the form of an energy lease. Um, I will also remind you that we will be taking two point six million dollars out of the remainder of our local appropriation, and applying that to the other schools that are not addressing this request. So, rounding third and heading for home, I should be done in about thirty more minutes. Um, if you look at our current budget, um, about six point six million dollars is, uh, what is it not about? You give us six point six million dollars. Last year, we, we requested six point nine. Our total operating budget was twenty-seven, ended up being twenty-seven, uh, million, three hundred thousand. If we were still following the new school option, um, our request this year would be six point nine million dollars, the same as it was last year. Uh, our total operating budget would be twenty-eight point five million, and that's where we would be. However, because that was not approved by a three-two vote in November, uh, our, our request will be for a seven million dollar operating budget, a fourteen million dollar capital budget, uh, which will bring that total, uh, funding budget to fourteen point seven nine nine. That's not right, total school funding increase, yeah, the increase is seven, fourteen point seven nine nine. So the total request from the city goes from six point nine, um, to twenty-one point four, almost twenty-one point five. Our total operating budget becomes twenty-eight million, which is still in line. But as you can see, the big difference is in the capital budget, fourteen million dollar increase, for a total budget of forty-three million dollars. Again, I will remind you, we, if, if we continue to say that a new school is not an option, we believe this is the next best option. We do not believe it is the best option, because we understand the impact of asking for fourteen million additional dollars to a city who's trying to get back on its feet. We have other obligations that are more pertinent to you, we understand that. You have the albatross, which is the landfill. You have the albatross, which is the Falls. We have a budget-neutral solution for you, we hope that you'll continue to consider it. If you don't, we stand firm that our schools, for our students, at the very least, should be safe, accessible, and functional. It's hard to argue with that need. So, that brings us back to the beginning. I was just kidding, about thirty minutes. If truly, if truly, our focus, your vision, is a strategic and focused increase of educational funding, we have a budget that's ready for you. If your, if your vision truly is that businesses, individuals, and families will relocate to our area because of the educational opportunities that are here are not found anywhere else, we have a budget for you. If that's not your focus anymore, please tell me, because we build our budget based on what you say that your vision for the future is. Our vision, I can tell you, remains that we want to prepare all students to thrive in a dynamically-changing world. Every single student. That's every student that's in a wheelchair, every student that lives in poverty, and every student that is going to be working at electromechanical, and every student that plans to go to a four-year college after they leave Virginia High School. We want to make that happen. We have to have your support in order to do that. Mr. Farnham and Mr. Muppert, I wanted to say amen earlier, when y'all were talking to the fellow from the, the Country Music Museum. And you talked about, man, you walk in that building, and it's so beautiful, and it's so attractive, and it just makes you want to be there, and it makes people want to come. We want you to feel that way about our schools. We want you to say that our schools are attractive, and that they're so beautiful, that when people walk in, they want their kids to be educated there. That's what we're asking from you, nothing more, nothing less. We want you to have the same passion for our schools that you have for the museum. Our kids deserve that. Going back to our vision, I'm gonna give you a quote, which I don't often do in a presentation, and you've probably all heard it before. And comes from a very wise man, you'll probably recognize it when I say it. Where there's no vision, the people perish. We're calling on you to live up to your vision. We're ready to live up to our vision. The other part of that quote that you may not be familiar with, but it's right there in the very next part of that verse, says this. But he that keepeth the law, he's a happy man. You have an opportunity to make our students, our citizens, happy by following the law that is ADA, and making our schools safe and accessible. We're asking you to do that, not for me, and not for our school board, because our kids deserve the very best. And the zip code should not matter in the quality of education they receive, the teachers that, the way their teachers are paid, or in the quality of the facilities that they attend. And so I very respectfully ask you to reconsider the PPA proposal that we provided to you in November. We've went through the process to keep that open, so we did not have to start that over again. But if not, we do ask you, on behalf of our children, our staff, and our community, to please, at the very least, make our schools safe, accessible, and functional. Thank you very much.
Okay, we had, um, questions, discussion from council while Dr. Perigent's at the podium?
Well, I do. So, let me, let me go back to some of your numbers.
I'm gonna get a drink of water, is that all right?
You go ahead.
All right.
Because it is sweltering in here. So let me go back, let me go back to some of your numbers here. If we...
Hang on just a second, we're not done with the presentation. That's okay.
I defer.
It's not her turn yet, she'll get her turn.
So, Dr. Perigent, if we break down the fourteen point four million dollars, if we break it down into the three categories...
Yes, sir.
So, safety, we're at two point one million, accessibility, we're at three point two million, functionality, we're at six point two million. And even if we set, you know, if we set Van Pelt aside, we were still at enormous numbers for all the three other schools. Because we all agree Van Pelt's in the best shape.
Oh, yeah, yeah, without a doubt.
Yeah.
I will say, can I add to that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to make sure that there's clarity. You know, part of what we were doing at Van Pelt is we were just buying the materials and using our staff to do those renovations there, because the idea was, if we're building a new school, we don't have a lot of maintenance at the old ones. However, if we move away from that model, we've got to put our maintenance man back out in the old schools, and so we can't do those renovations, which is why Van Pelt ends up back on the list. Sorry.
That's fine. And you said you, you don't want to differentiate between zip codes, you know, whether or not a kid gets a good education. I, I'd drill it down even further. You know, a kid who lives on Meadowcrest shouldn't have access to a better education or a better school building than a kid who lives on Mary Street or a kid who lives on Newton Street. And, and that's the case that we're in, because the schools are worlds apart. If you, if you walk into Highland View, you walk into Van Pelt, they're completely different. Mr. Farnham can attest to that, we went to the schools together, we looked at them. So you've got this fourteen million dollars, and, you know, even breaking it down, it's, it's huge numbers for each, each section. So I guess the question, the question for us is, how do we, you know, we can't pay for that all at once. We can't break it up over ten or fifteen years. If we do that, at the end of the timeframe, we still need a new school. Highland View is still gonna be ninety-five years old, whether we fixed it or not. So I mean, that's, that's a major concern for me, just going into this situation. And I mean, it's, we had the budget-neutral option four months ago. Every time, when we're sworn into office here, we take an oath to be good stewards of the taxpayer money. We have a moral obligation to do that. I don't know how we, in good faith, pour this massive amount of money into these schools when we know what the end game is. I mean, we know, we know where we have to be down the road. So I don't know how we do that. And I don't know how we afford it anyway, if we want to do it. You know, whether, whether we want to do it or not, how do we do it? How, how do we afford it? So I mean, that's a question we have to ask ourselves and ask each other, you know, how, how are we gonna do this? I know what the correct answer is, or I feel, I know what I feel the correct answer is. And I, I think Mr. Harley might agree with me. I don't know how we get to this fourteen million dollars. I, I appreciate you presenting it to us, I don't know how we get to it.
And all due respect, Mr. Osborne, I don't know how you get to three million dollars. When you're looking at the awesome burden that you have at the landfill and at the Falls, I don't know how you put a single penny of Bristol, Virginia taxpayer dollars into old buildings. But I'll tell you, we're not gonna shut, we're, we're gonna keep on going until our kids at least have safe, accessible, and functional schools. Prefer a budget-neutral option, but we'll, we'll take whatever you'll give us.
I mean, it's, I, I know where we went originally, we were worried about the thirty-seven million over the thirty years. It's, it's the same way, I mean, you've talked about a Band-Aid option. You know, some people have used the analogy, it's like buying a car, and, you know, how much are you gonna pour into an old car? I, I look at it like, uh, like putting a roof on a, on a house, or a heat pump. I don't have ten thousand dollars to sink into a roof, so am I gonna have to finance it, yes. And do I have to pay interest, yes, but is there water coming in my house, no. So I mean, we pay more with interest over time, that's true, but is it necessary? Of course it is. So I mean, it is a, it is a massive lack of foresight on our part to pour this kind of money into these kind of buildings. And so, I mean, I appreciate your comment, I just, I don't know what to tell you. You know, we can't get fourteen, I don't know how we get five.
Well, I, I just want to say I appreciate everything, and, uh, starting back at the beginning, um, I, I commend you on, uh, what you talked about at the beginning as far as the types of classes that we're gearing towards, as far as the health and medical services, cybersecurity, and also the job partnership with electromechanical. I think that's great, I think that's really thinking ahead. I don't know if any other school systems are doing that, but the fact that we are, it's, we're preparing our students.
I don't know about any other school systems except for this. I don't think anybody else is training kids to grow hydroponic plants for a CBD manufacturing plant. I would just about bet on that one.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's smart. I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
You probably figured I, I did.
Yeah, that was a good setup.
There was a slide where we talked about the, the carryover funds, and I think the figure was around s- almost eight hundred thousand. And, uh, then there was a five hundred thousand dollar number, so what was that?
I'm getting there.
What was that being used for?
There it was, right?
Yeah.
Coming back. So, we, you have, we, we believe our beginning balance for food service, is that what you're talking about, five hundred thousand?
For the, uh, for the local capital projects.
So the local capital, that is, we have an agreement with city council, that's two hundred thousand. Any money that we have left over locally, we have, not just Bristol, anywhere in the state of Virginia has to come back to their appropriating body and request to keep that over on the school side. Many school divisions have agreements with their appropriating bodies that says, up to this much, or up to this percent, you can keep without coming back to ask. Our agreement is two hundred thousand dollars. So, since two thousand and twelve, we have accumulated this amount of money, and we, well, five ninety-two now. Because we're, we're guessing our beginning balance is going to have two hundred thousand dollars from this budget year. Don't know that. We're too, we're not close enough to the end to know if we're going to have it. We're assuming the best, and that we'll have that two hundred thousand, but let's pretend like we don't. So that takes it down to five ninety-two. We had budgeted in that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a project manager for the new school. So five ninety-two, anybody with a calculator want to help me out with that? Five ninety-two minus one fifty, that's what we have in that account. That's what we would have had, had our budget worked out the way that we thought. As you know, a budget is truly just a planning document. We planned a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for project management, didn't have to spend it. What's that?
Four forty-two.
Thank, yeah. So, so really what we basically have there is two years' worth of carryover. Uh, some of the things that we've used that carryover for, um, is resurfacing our track, resurfacing our tennis courts. Um, our maintenance director can tell you some more, I mean, you know, I can't remember all those. But we've used so, some of that money and some of it we've kept because the plan is to use that money as you, as we are going through the PPA process, that money was a re, was also planned to do the renovations at Van Pelt. That was what we were going to pay for the materials and supplies for. We did that, you know, part of that renovation is already done, so we, some of that money went towards that last year. But with, you know, the idea being that the PPA process would get approved. Because all indications going into that, you know, we were told very early, you can't make this happen. If you do, we're behind you. And so we planned that way. We made it happen, but things change.
So what is that five hundred thousand, uh, expense?
So we planned to spend five hundred thousand, but we can't tell you what we're going to spend it on until you tell us what direction that you're going to go with our capital request. That's why I was saying, very politely, please hurry.
Well, I, I think, I definitely agree with you, and I think, I don't want to speak on behalf of every member up here, but we, we do need to make our schools, and I think I misspoke earlier, last time when we talked, and I said, are our schools unsafe? And you said, no, and that was a bad way to phrase it. Our schools are safe, but we just need to commit to continually making them more and more safe every year.
They, they are not as safe as other schools in our area, but they are as safe as we can make them in our current si- situation.
So safety...
But that's not good enough.
Right. So safety and accessibility are definitely important at the top of this list for me. Um, you know, from looking here at the, the list, uh, as it breaks down each school, I love the idea of creating the vestibule area by the front door, so essentially someone can get buzzed in. But they're still not in the school, they're, they're in a, there, there's another level of protection there. So, um, I was adding up, it looked like to do that at Highland View, and I'll jump right into some numbers here. Stonewall Jackson, Washington Lee, Highland View, um, combined, those vestibules was about a hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, and, and definitely, uh, accessibility, um, I wanted to ask about, now I had talked to a lady who works here with the city, Ellen, and she was telling me there's some grant funding available for school accessibility. Uh, she mentioned to me potentially up to seventy thousand dollars, um, this year coming up. Is, is that something that we're going after, we've applied for?
We were, I was unaware, actually, um, one of our principals, two years ago, was aware of that money and, and used that grant to make one of the bathrooms at Van Pelt handicap accessible. And so we, I have spoke with Ellen, we are going to try to leverage some of that money. But let me go back to, to one of the points that, that you made. A hundred thousand dollars for those vestibules, that's a great idea, I agree. I wish I could take credit for that idea, it's not mine. That's what, that's what all the kids are doing now, that's what all the schools are doing. But, once you build those walls, you have to fully implement ADA. So you can't just do a hundred thousand and say, okay, we're not going to do ADA. Once you build a brick and mortar wall, you lose your, um, I don't know, I don't know what the right word is. But you, you can no longer not be handicap accessible if you build, if you do a renovation like that. So, let's build that hundred and five thousand dollars at three places. Actually, we, we need to do it at Van Pelt as well.
And I did, I left Van Pelt out specifically, but I was going to ask you about that in just a second.
But anyway, I would just say, keep in mind, I agree, let's build the vestibule no matter what, but if we build the vestibule, we also have to make all those schools handicap accessible.
Now, uh...
Just keep that in mind.
Now, for accessibility, so my first thought was, in here, I think it, to replace the elevator at Hi-, uh, Stonewall Jackson, was about fifty-five thousand?
Yeah, I told you originally seventy-five thousand early on, but we evidently have a quote for fifty-five thousand.
So if we could get that grant funding for that, that would take care of that. And I saw the other, uh, items in here about the elevator at Highland View, which was a little over three hundred thousand. The elevator at Washington Lee, a little over seven hundred thousand. Um, and definitely Washington and Lee is, the way it's laid out, it's, it's not really, it's a little difficult, complicated floor plan. But, um, but you know, if I had to prioritize, in my opinion, for, for what it's worth, the fourteen point four million, you know, the, those elevators, um, and those vestibules, about one point two million, tho- that would be something I'd definitely put at the top because it's, it's safety and accessibility. And I know total safety and accessibility, there's, there's more to that, but that's definitely something that's, um, that I think we needed, we needed to do.
Well, I would agree with you, but keep in mind, once you do that, you have to do all of the handicap accessibility requirements that are on there. And when you build the elevator at Washington Lee, you lose two classroom spaces. So you've got to do something with the students that are in those two classrooms. It's not like we have empty classrooms just laying around not being used.
Yeah.
Which is another, uh, probably should add that to the list, another eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and two dollars, I think. Is that right?
I'll take your word, yeah, you're close. The, um, and the reason I left, I had left Van Pelt off of that list with, uh, in regards to, now I know, I guess it was last summer, we did one of those pods, we converted the, the four essentially classroom areas into the five rooms.
Right.
So there was one done last summer, and my understanding is there's one planning on being done this summer with the office being moved up. Is that in the works?
It depends. It depends on this slide. What are you going to tell us to do? If you say we're moving forward with the PPA process, we'll take that money, we'll take our own staff, and we'll make that happen. If not, our maintenance staff can't do that because now our maintenance staff is maintaining all six buildings. So that's, that's why that that's included in there. If you go back to the old PPA process, now we're using our local capital and our local talent to take care of the renovations at Van Pelt, which make it much more cost-effective because our, you know, we're paying our guys a lot less than what contractors are charging for that work to be done. It's a good plan, it's a really good plan. And I, I just, but for the life of me, I can't see why that you're interested in spending two, three million dollars of taxpayer dollars when we can build a brand-new school and not cost our taxpayers another extra penny. But, that's not my choice to make.
All right.
Keep backing, Bill.
Yeah. I mean, these are tough choices, you know, we're kind of in a bind here, I guess. I mean, and, and I mentioned that before when we, when we voted on the school, that, um, you know, part of it is, is the debt we find ourselves in, but part of it is making up for, for things that should have been done a long time ago. You know, to me, uh, uh, both as a council member, the, the liability that comes with, with safety and access, but also as a parent, I, you know, these are things that have to be done. Uh, we can't ignore it. We had to find a way to do it. You know, I think everybody has different opinions on how we get there. My recommendation, I've mentioned you, Dr. Perigent, and, and to the city manager, you standing there answering questions, and the five of us up here, we need to get together with the school board and sit down and try to figure out where we want to be and how we get there. And, and I think, you know, the soon, it, you know, the, we need to have conversation and try to, you know, do we agree on where we want to be? And if so, then let's figure out how the best way to get there that, that makes us the best stewards of the taxpayers' dollars uh, and, and provides what our children need to be able to succeed.
Mr. Harley, I don't disagree with that, we've tried that in the past, and what ends up happening is we get screamed at and we get assigned to go on snipe hunts that we provide the answers to that are disregarded. And so, I would think that our board is not, doesn't think it's a very productive process. We'll do whatever you ask us to do, but if we're going to come to the table to talk, then I think you truly need to come to the table to talk. Because that's not happened in the past. We've been, we've been sent on snipe hunts, and I, I went over that back in November. You asked me to do this, did that, check. Did that, check. Did that, check. Attorney General's opinion, check. Uh, standard and poor's approval, bam. Then we do all those things and we still get a vote of no. I think that the, um, it's, it's just hard for us to believe that coming back to the table is going to be productive because of previous experience. Now, I, I'm speaking for myself and not for the board, but Mr. Mayor, you, I mean, you gave me tons and tons of assignments, and I met every one of them. And you still, it didn't have any impact on your vote.
And I appreciate you doing that, and it's getting us...
It costs us a lot of money.
And it's getting us to understand the problem more than, more today than we did yesterday, and that's part of the process. So now it's my turn. So yeah, our meetings have been tough, but you know, when you're in a tough situation, doctor, it, it requires tough discussions. That's the only way you can get a healthy city to revive itself again, right? We're in a tough spot, and I don't think there's anybody in this room still appreciates the tough spot we're in. I mean, to have a landfill, as an example, to sink thirty-five million dollars worth of debt from the taxpayers sitting on the other side of this podium over the last twenty years, is criminal. I mean, it's, it's not, it, it's hard to even wrap your mind around how you could sink thirty-five million dollars worth of taxpayer money in a landfill over a twenty-year time period, and that would have built what? Two schools with cash, right? We'd have built two schools with what we've poured in the landfill. So when comments are made like, it's absurd that we're working on the landfill, well, yeah, it's absurd that we even have to work on the landfill. Because, let me finish.
I didn't make that comment.
It's my turn, let me finish.
I didn't make that comment.
Let me finish, I know, it was made in the paper.
Okay.
So when somebody makes a comment, it's absurd that we're working on a landfill, well, no, it's not absurd that we're working on it because it's absurd that we're sinking thirty-five million dollars over a twenty-year time period of taxpayer money into something that we shouldn't be sinking that money into. So we're trying to figure out what to do with the landfill so we don't sink another thirty-five million. So if we don't fix that problem here in the next twenty-four months and really understand what we're going to do, you're going to wake up in twenty-thirty and there's going to be another school setting up in that trash landfill. So that'll be three schools we could have paid for, right, since nineteen ninety-eight. Well, you know what, that is not, that's, there's not even a word for that. That is not irresponsible, right? That's people that shouldn't be living in this city anymore, because that's what they got us into, right? Because if that, without that, you'd probably already have two new schools working on the third. And that's irregardless of the land, of the falls. That's not even talking about the falls, which is another two million dollars a year sinking out of the taxpayer money to go into a development of a commercial nature that the city should never gotten into. Okay, so over a ti- ten-year time period, if we don't figure that out, how much is two million times ten? There's you another school. So you see, that's why we're in the predicament we're in, right? So what we're trying to do is say, look, we got to be really careful with these big dollar decisions. PPA, no PPA, we cannot chew off a big elephant anymore until we make one hundred and fifty percent sure we know we've got this city standing up, walking forward, landfill fixed, falls figured out, so we don't sink another thirty million dollars into something, and we all wake up and we don't have anything that we want, right? So yeah, we all want a new school. Hell, if I had thirty-five million dollars, I'd write you a check tonight to build you a new school. I, I personally would do that. And I've told her more than once, if I win the lottery, the first check I'm going to cut's right to you to build you a new school. I would do that personally, if I had the money. But you know, the timing has to be right, and there's so much risk going on in the city right now. We got to be really careful. So you can't get, you can't get unprofessional with your comments, or you can't take stuff personally. You got to have tough discussions, right, that we're having to grow up as a city to make sure we're doing the right thing going forward. Because we can't repeat this stuff ever again, right? It has drained, I don't know, I mean, there ain't no hair left on my head, but it has drained every ounce of energy, right, that I could have mustered over the last twenty-four months even looking at this stuff. It's disgusting. It's professionally disgusting to look at numbers that, that you can't even wrap your mind around, how, how they make no sense. Well, we're starting to make some sense of it now. We're starting to understand the landfill, because me and this guy and some others have been in that room for two weeks now, right? Working on every detail we can possibly figure out to save this city that thirty-five million from ever occurring again, right? That's what we're doing. Well, no, we don't have fourteen million. You guys know that, it's almost embarrassing, and I, I don't, I don't want to say that, but, you know, you know we don't have fourteen million. But you know we want a new school, we want to take care of the kids. So what we got to do is be smart about what we do right now as we're trying to figure out how to slowly walk forward, right? So all that detail you provided, you know, what you call snipe hunts, which I don't call them snipe hunts, that's very good information, right? That's the detailed, that's the detailed cost we got to be to understand what that dollar means, where would it go, how would we apply it to each school, and what does that option look like when we start figuring out what are we going to do with these schools, right? So nobody's going to sit up here and say that safety is not a priority. Safety is absolutely a priority. There's nobody would go to sleep at night thinking a kid would get hurt at school, all right? So when you say safety, one thing we need to do is you got to put more detail to when you say safety. What are those, what are those safety items? Well, when you got fourteen million that you know you can't pay for, you got to start prioritizing the stuff that... Let me finish, please. You got to start really prioritizing what you go after and what you not go after, right? So when I look at that list, I go, okay, there's some good stuff on this list, but there's another level of prioritization that's got to occur. One, these numbers are really big, even in certain categories. When you look at three hundred thousand dollars, right, for ADA compliance, which we know we need to do in a school, well, it begs about six questions. Really, how many, how many ADA compliant bathrooms do you need? What level? How many's in that school? Do we really need to spend three hundred this year, or we can get away with fifty and then we do another hundred next year? Those are the professional, value-added discussions that we've got to have to make sure when you walk into Highland View, you know, next year, you don't have to worry about if you're a handicapped person, which bathroom you have to go to. It should be there. But it can't cost us three hundred thousand dollars, right? We've all quoted ADA compliant bathrooms. We know what it costs to cut a wall out, change the door frame, put new stalls in, put the, put the necessary rails in. We know what that costs because we've done it for ten years over our career, right? Well, it doesn't cost three or four hundred thousand dollars. Well, it might if you want to take everyone up to a completely five-star level and do all kinds of things that's not really absolutely necessary. So it's, we're in a condition to where we got to do what's right to make sure the schools are safe, nobody gets hurt, handicapped people can go in and go out of our buildings without having to worry about where to go to the restroom and all that kind of stuff, and make it accessible. But it's got to be a very reasonable approach to these numbers, and they have to be scrubbed a lot more to make sure, okay, we could get away with doing this and everybody would be okay going into Highland View Stonewall, while the city figures out this year and next year, maybe the year after, where we're going to be with our debt load and where we're going to be with our revenues. Because the last thing we could do is overcommit and then wake up in thirty-six months because things are going well now, and then all of a sudden, we're back where we started from, two, two steps back to where we even started two years ago. That's not going to happen, right? And I can't see anybody responsibly thinking we can get there. So, I appreciate all the work, it throws a different subject on it, but this was enlightening from the stand... It throws a different subject on it, but this was enlightening from the standpoint of all the stuff that we've ignored over 20 years, right? This problem didn't create itself in 2018 or 2017, right? This goes back to a school board and a city council not putting the right money into that school system for three decades or more. Three decades. So, obviously, when you do that, if you was to ignore your house for three decades, you cannot afford to fix it in one-year budget cycle. Just not going to happen, right? You might as well just tear it down and start over again or do something that you know you can get to next year and the year after, right? You've got to figure out a different approach. And unfortunately, that's where we are. We didn't ask to get here, but that's where we are as a city. So, we're willing to do what's absolutely necessary to make them safe and make them accessible. We do have a little bit of extra cash because we've been really tough on where the dollars have gone. So, yeah, we've got 14 and a half million sitting in the bank, right? But there's a bunch of that already accounted for to make sure that we've got enough to pay our bills, we don't have to borrow short-term notes, we've got our debt service covered, which we have to do, and then there's a little bit left over. So, if we do the same thing next year, maybe there's another $2 million. So, we've got to look at that little bit of money we've got that's excess and be smart and responsible about how we apply it. How do we apply it? Because nobody's going to be happy with how it applies, right? And maybe the PPA is the best solution in the world, but the timing for the city was absolutely the wrong timing based on where we are as a city financially. And yep, you, you gave the later Attorney General, you gave the, the credit agencies when you read them, they had documentation in there that said, "It doesn't matter what you do. This debt is a moral obligation." So, you cannot say you have no debt. It might not be legal debt, but it's moral debt. So, if you make a stand that you're not going to pay your moral debt, the next investor that thinks he's going to buy a bond that we need to do something in the city is going to say, "Bristol's not morally supporting their debt," and they'll back off. That's the, that's the precedence you do not set. So, when the Attorney General said what he said, yes, there was some truth in there, but it's still, it painted a very risky picture, very risky. And we are not in the business of risk right now. We've got to complete, completely be risk averse, right? And I, I, and I hate preaching, but my goodness, do we not understand as a city where we came from and where we are still? Because if we don't, we need to take a deep breath and start studying the numbers a little bit deeper, right? We are still clearly not even, we're not even 10 feet from being out of the woods, right? We're 100 yards back in the woods and we can barely see the light peeking through the tree line. Barely. That's where we are, but at least we're seeing the light now. So, if we get rid of a couple of big expense items like the landfill, you know, maybe we can start to open up the pasture a little bit and see. And that, folks, is factually where we are. And you know what? We've got to deal with it. So, we're going to do the very best we can through this budget cycle to look at these numbers and give the school system what we think we can afford so you can make it safe, you can make it accessible, so the kids have something to not worry about when they come to school, but it's not going to be $14 million. It can't be because we don't have the, we don't have the money.
What would you predict it would be, Mr. Mayor? What would you predict it would be? I think Ms. Bradlin said earlier, there's about 1.5 available.
Well, I think by the time June ends up, if, if revenues keep tracking the way they are-
Did I misquote, I didn't mean to.
If revenues keep tracking the way they are, and a lot depends on, you know, we've got a couple of things that have cash at play that we don't know the answer to yet. And I'm not going to get into that in this discussion because that's another heated discussion. But there's more money out there that this city manager's working on, right? So, it could be as much as $2 to $3 million that's available, and it could be double that, right? But, it's not in the bush yet, right? The bird's not, it's still in the bush. The bird's not in the hand yet. So, we're working our tails off to try to figure out how to maximize that cash so then we can do more of the requirements of the school system, right? Which also include pay raises. And I do agree of all the things you said there, you know, businesses do that. When you have a, a pay scale so out of whack where your entry level, the people you're trying to hire, you're so non-competitive, that's a problem. Yet, you've got to fix it. You've got to fix it all at once really quickly or you can continue, continue to bleed talent, right? So, we need to figure out that too and figure out how to support you on that manner, right? But, we only have so much money. You know, so we're going to do the best we can to figure out what we can give the school system, right? It's going to be more than you got last year, I promise you that. It's going to be more on that capital line, I promise you that, right? Whether it's going to be a million or a million-five or $500,000, it's too early to understand that yet because we haven't seen all the numbers. But we're going to maximize every dollar we can for the school system after we know we've taken care of a couple of public safety items that are pretty critical, like police cars and a couple of other things that are falling apart. And then keep figuring out how to get these albatrosses that we talked about, the landfill, taken care of, right? And so, that's where we are. I had a lot more questions, but I think I'll save it till later because, you know, I kind of, I kind of said my piece, right? But I'm going to have a lot more questions. So, you know, I guess be ready for snipe hunts, if that's what you want to call it. But, it's part of the process. It's part of understanding the details behind what we're looking at.
When you don't use the information to make the decision, that's called a snipe hunt.
Oh, no.
There's a budget-
The decision that you provided was all used, I promise you. Every bit of data we get, we look at it, I look at it more than once and it's all considered. Doesn't mean we agree and go forward with it, but it's all looked at and the context provided.
Your words, Mr. Mayor, was that if we provided that information and it was true and accurate, that you would go through with it.
I did never, I never said that.
Yeah, you said that.
I'd never said that. I said, I said, "We would have a chance."
You most certainly said that.
Well, are you done with your presentation, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Marnie?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. In view of the school situation, what is being talked about is space management. Space management. This is what architects deal with. This is what we're all hearing tonight, space management. Now, I hear the terms over and over, "safe, accessible, functional schools." Who in the world ever came up with that? Who came up with that? What's the definition? What's the definition of those terms? What, what's the interpretation? We don't know that. But we keep going back to space management. Now, I disagree with the figures, the definitions, and the conclusions of what I have heard in a number of things. I will not, eh, I'm giving a very brief summation here, but I disagree with the figures, the definitions, and the conclusions. No matter what is done with the schools, no technology will work without the three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic. No technology exists without a knowledge of those three things. I think that if we had heard more creative thinking, which dealt with using what we have, it would make a very big difference. All we hear over and over and over again is "new school." Of course, at some point in time, we'll have to have a new school. And anybody knows that. But I don't see that in the foreseeable future. But I do not hear anything about the creative process of dealing with what we have. And that's a big item. That's what this city has been through. I know. I sat through all these meetings. I know what we went through. I was here, and it just tore my heart out more than once to see what the city had to do. But we had to do it. But we need creative thinking to use what we have. I think that we need to have changes in the curriculum, and I think we need some changes in the thought process that goes into our education. I have great respect for the superintendent. That is not my issue. I'm dealing with what I have been hearing. Now, in my opinion, the solution that we have tonight rests with the teachers and the curriculum, not the buildings. The teachers and the curriculum will give you the solutions we have. We have to learn to read and write.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, with that, moving on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, motion to approve as it's presented.
A second.
Second, Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Monpower?
Yes. Adjourn.